Good evening, everyone. Good evening and thank you for being here in City Council chambers with us. I’m Sally Bagshaw, and this is actually our second budget meeting of the day. It’s October 23rd, 2018. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is going to be very short, and it is on the Aquarium Capital Improvement Project. So, we are required, under some specific state statutes, to have what is known as a “clean” hearing, which refers to a lawsuit a decade or so ago. So, what we’re going to do is open this up for a hearing for the proposed Seattle Aquarium expansion. This is not new. This has actually been on the books now for almost eight or nine years, but this year, the $34 million that has been committed for the aquarium will start to be expended. So, we have committed up to $34 million to the Aquarium Society for Design and Construction, and this is the part of the project down on the waterfront, in part will connect to Pike Place Market, and another part is an expansion of the aquarium facilities and the piers 59 and 60. So, before we begin the public hearing, I want to acknowledge that we have a number of our municipal court judges here with us, and after we open the public hearing for the aquarium—I don’t expect it to be very long—then I’m going to ask you judges to speak on the issues that are of interest to you when we open the second public hearing. So, just a quick, a little bit more background about—the aquarium project is called an “Ocean Pavilion,” and it’s going to integrate improvements that the aquarium has already made, and increase exhibit space, operations efficiency, and care for the marine mammals that are in their charge. So, with that, I’m now going to open the public hearing for comments on the proposed support for expansion of the Seattle Aquarium. So, we’re just talking about aquarium, and after this, we will open the second public comment opportunity to talk about our budget. So, we have just one person who has signed up to speak about the aquarium, so our public hearing is now open, and I’m going to invite Barbara Cepeda to come up to the microphone. And Barbara, if you meant to sign up for something other than the aquarium, do let me know.
Yeah. Thanks.
First of all, I want to say that I complained that we don’t have actually any information about the budget. I went up to the clerk’s office, and they were nice enough to print about 10 pages for me of what the actual budget is, and I just want to mention—you said $34 million for the aquarium.
Up to $34 million.
Okay, that’s half of the budget for the public library, and I’m going to say something about this, because the public library now is a homeless shelter, and if you’re not going to provide some homeless shelter for people in the aquarium, because none of the kids in the average family in Seattle can afford to go there. Most of the kids are poor now. Most of the children are poor. And this is a city that has been subsidizing high-rise buildings, and when you find out how much you subsidize each of the buildings, you probably could have a free aquarium for the kids.
All right, thank you. Anybody else like to speak about the aquarium? I’m going to close the public hearing on the aquarium, and next, I’m going to open the public hearing for comments about the budget. And we will have folks lined up—I believe everybody has cards that you will have been given with numbers, and we are reviewing tonight the mayor’s budget and proposals that have already been presented and offered by my council colleagues. All of you know, who are involved in these budget proceedings, that we will have what are called “green sheets” submitted by Thursday at 2:00 p.m., and those are the formal recommendations by my individual colleagues up here on the dais about changes that they would like to see to the mayor’s budget. After that, we will put together a balancing package. As you all know, this budget has to balance, so anything we add, there has to be either a new revenue source or that we have to take it from somewhere else. So, I am now opening the public hearing for comments, and I’m going to first ask our municipal court judges—I see a number of you in the back—if you would like to come up and approach the microphones, and I welcome you here. Very good, thank you. Good to see you.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for this opportunity to address you publicly. I know it’s that time of year when you’re called upon to make very difficult decisions with limited resources, and my colleagues and I are here to discuss the proposal to defund the court’s municipal probation services. It’s apparent that there’s a significant amount of misinformation and perhaps a misconception regarding our municipal probation services. I hope the council has had an opportunity to review the information and materials that we provided to you earlier, and for those in the audience, I do have some additional information that I can pass out if you wish. Briefly, the reality is, most low-level offenders are diverted out of municipal court, or at least the municipal court system, either before charges are filed or after charges are filed. Of those who are actually referred to municipal probation, that’s about 30% of all of the offenders that appear in Seattle Municipal Court. 70% of those cases are what we would consider fairly serious offenders. These are DUI-related offenses, domestic violence offenses, assaults, harassment, stalking, sexual offenses. These are not low-level offenders. These are what we would all consider, I believe, serious offenders. We believe that at Seattle Municipal Probation, that we employ evidence-based best practices, and if we don’t do that, we should be doing that. We should be open and accountable, and to that end, I’m offering that we initiate an independent review of our services by experts from the National Center for State Courts, and we will even fund that study with trial court improvement funds, and that’s our state funds, which will have no impact on the city budget. I hope that you will join with us in that review. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge McKenna.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. When I came to you in 2016 for your vote for my confirmation, I told you that the reason I wanted to be a judge was to be able to make a difference in the lives of the people that come before me at Seattle Municipal Court, because I believe that’s a people’s court, and I believe that I have held to that promise to you, and I’ve been able to do that because of working in conjunction with our probation department. We work—we are compassionate about the work that we do, and with them, I have been able to do that. They do a number of things that help me to have options for sentencing other than jail. They provide a wide variety of individual appropriate supportive services, including assessments, treatment and counseling connections to social services. We help individuals maintain employment, housing, family and community connections while working with their counselors to meet their court obligation. And as I said, our goal is to make sure that we are giving people tools so that they don’t come back before our court. To that end, our Court Resource Center has been something that I have been intimately involved with. We have worked with community partners, collaborated with them. We brought community partners on board so that we have things to offer. Some of our community partners include the Department of Social and Health Services, Center for Human Services, First Choice Victims Panel, Urban League, specifically their job employment and placement program, Pioneer Services, the Road Maps Program, Seattle Library, and King County Public Health. We continue to gather collaborative partners to help us do our work. And just one quick story to show how we have implemented that today—just today—I had a case—a person who had multiple prior convictions, low level. Instead of imposing jail time, I was able to impose things that are involved with our Court Resource Center and a program that our probation department came up with—a life skills program where people can go and learn life skills. They can get work on helping to come up with a plan for their life budget. They can get planned with talking about relationships, everything that kind of helps them get on track. Also, I referred this person to the Urban League program, which helps him get employment. So, these are creative ways that our court and with the help of our probation department is helping people to get on track and not just offering jail as an alternative. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. My name is Adam Eisenberg. I’m also one of the judges in Seattle Municipal Court, and good evening. In addition to what Judge Crawford Willis said, we have a program called Day Reporting, which allows people to stay out of jail while their cases are pending by checking in with the Day Reporting folks. When they do that, they’re exposed to additional access to services through our Court Resource Center. So, this is one way that we keep people out of jail. That’s one of our goals. Through the Court Resource Center, we also have self-awareness classes. We help people get their GEDs. We—under state law, if you commit a DUI, you have to do Victims Panel. We’re able to provide Victims Panel for people at the cost of $35. That’s cheaper than anywhere else in the state, and we have free slots for indigent folks. The Life Skills Class, the Self-Awareness Class, all those things are free through our probation department. That’s part of what our probation department funds. In addition, Seattle Municipal Court is developing a new domestic violence intervention program. It’s a new individualized treatment model for folks who’ve committed domestic violence offenses. We’re working with the mayor’s office on sexual assault and domestic violence—I always switch those two in the mayor’s office title. Lon Pham is the director. She’s intimately involved in our program. So is Coalition Ending Gender-Based Violence, the King County Health Department. We have—we work with Wellspring, Family Services, and ACRS. This is a program that we’re hoping will actually help courts across the state develop a new model for domestic violence treatment, individualized, a more holistic approach to try to help folks not reoffend. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Nice to see you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Judge Willie Gregory. I’m Assistant Presiding Judge of Seattle Municipal Court, and in my eight years of being on the bench, I’ve been what I would call a probation-heavy judge. My first two years, I was presiding over mental health court, and after that, presided over community court, and now I’m the Veterans Treatment Court Judge. And in all of those courts, I relied heavily on probation—not for probation to help me put people in jail, but probation for help me keep people out of jail, to help people live a better life and make sure they get services. I love Veterans Treatment Court, is what I’m instrumental in taking care of now, because we have veterans, people who have served their country, working for all of us and making sure that we have freedoms, who come to our court because they are having problems. But I can tell you, many times, we graduate people from that court, and it is through the fact that they’ve stayed in contact with their probation officers as well as the court, and we tell them we’re a team. We work together to make sure that these people can get back to living a instrumental and an important life. And I was given things to say here, but I want to tell you from my heart that we—our probation department—we have very skilled workers who make sure that they give us good information. As a judge, like my colleagues, what we want—and we’re on the bench—is good information. I know I can count on probation for good information all the time. Today, I had a question when I was looking at information from one of my people who appeared before me. I contacted my probation officer, the head person. She connected me to one of her probation officers, who came right up and gave me the information I needed to make a right and a good decision. If you decide to discontinue Seattle Municipal Court probation, it would definitely be an error on your part, because we have, again, skilled professionals who are making sure that we do our job, and that is protect the citizens of Seattle. So, thank you for listening to all of us, and I hope that you definitely keep our probation officer’s office intact.
Thank you, Judge Gregory.
You all might remember my face, because you recently affirmed my appointment to Seattle Municipal Court. I’m Judge Fay Chess. I told you when I came in front of you a couple of months ago that I was seeking this position, because I wanted to bring a holistic approach to criminal justice. In other words, when people come in front of us, I wanted to tell you, we would see them, and not only in seeing them, we wanted to be able to—I wanted to be able to put and craft things that will help them not come back into the system. Well, the probation department does that. It enables me, along with my colleagues, to make a holistic approach in holding them not only accountable, but also helping them so they won’t come back in the system. I won’t repeat what my colleagues have said, but I want you to give due consideration for taking funding away from a source that helps us keep people from returning into the system and also to maneuver in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Chess. Thank you very much to the municipal court judges. I appreciate very much you taking your time and coming and expressing your concerns and opinions. Okay, speaker number one is Phoebe Feldsher, David Heldy, Willow Maloney, and I would like you—if you would all line up so that we have three, and then the next three will be Diane Ferguson, Carolyn Malone, and Queen Bee, King Rios. So, Phoebe, David, and Willow, you’re up.
Hi, my name is Phoebe Feldsher. I’m a housing case manager with Plymouth Housing Group. Of the over 1,000 people that Plymouth serves, about 110 live in the building I work at, 45 of which are on my caseload. Many of the folks that are housed by Plymouth come directly to housing from chronic homelessness and have extensive trauma histories on top of significant mental and/or physical health issues. In November, I’ll celebrate one year with Plymouth, and already, I’m the most senior housing case manager in my building. Tenants joked with me when I first arrived, asking if I was here to stay or if they had managed to scare me off yet. The folks that I work with continue to make these jokes. Whenever direct services staff move on, the entire building grieves. It’s inevitable in work that demands powerful connection. Many tenants have experienced significant trauma or abandonment, and we are asking a lot of folks when we ask them to trust us. Frequent staff turnover reinforces the narrative that folks aren’t worth sticking around for, that they push people away, and that eventually, everyone does leave. Often, folks walk away from these positions with heavy hearts, their own survival compelling them towards other agencies or areas. Social services wages have not kept pace with cost-of-living adjustments, and folks are struggling. I have personally experienced housing instability while working full-time. It’s deeply ironic to me that the very people trying to help these folks stay housed can become at risk of homelessness themselves. You’ve heard that people don’t come to this work for the money, and that’s absolutely right. They come for the opportunity to do something truly revolutionary, build community by fostering connection, healing, and hope. I’m so grateful that I have the privilege of doing that work. While I know this council recognizes that building relationship is essential in keeping people housed, I urge you to consider the stability of service workers. Of those folks whose work so many admire and appreciate, by compensating them adequately so they don’t have to make the impossible choice between their own survival and their community. Thank you.
Good. Thank you so much, Phoebe. David Heldy, then Willow, Diane, Carolyn, and Queen Bee thereafter. Hi.
I’d like to start by thanking Teresa Muscata and voicing my support for her amendment raising the—what do you call it? You know what I’m talking about. The cost of living to 3.5%. My name is David Heldy. I work at DESE’s Main Shelter. I’ve worked there for three and a half years, and absolutely nobody that worked there the first day I started is still at the Main Shelter. Turnover in that environment is just too high, because we just aren’t paid enough. It’s an incredibly stressful job. It’s an incredibly difficult job, and we just need to be paid more. Not only that, but the decisions that we make in that environment are literally life and death. I’ve had people die in my arms. I know that the people that I have kicked out of the shelter at night, that I have turned down for a bed in the morning, have gone out and committed suicide, that they have froze to death at night, that they are no longer with us for one reason or another. And the decisions that we make in homeless shelters, they’re not entry-level position decisions. They’re not minimum wage decisions. They are decisions that need to be made by people that have more training, more experience at least, and with the wages that we make, it—there’s just entirely too much turnover. And our brothers and sisters, our city deserves better than that.
Thank you, David. Willow? Ferguson, Diane, can I ask you, Carolyn Malone, and Queen Bee to line up? Thank you. Good to see you.
Hello, my name is Willow Maloney, and I also work at DESE at the Morrison and Pioneer Square. I’m a residential counselor, and along with Council Member Muscata and supporters of her amendment, I believe that emotional labor deserves fair compensation. In order to pay my bills in Seattle, like many of my coworkers, I work just under 100 hours a pay period, as well as a second job where I make about as much in tips alone as I do at an entire shift at DESE. Additionally, with a year and a half under my belt, I’m one of the longest-standing staff in a fully client-facing position. While the work is challenging, both in support of housing and at the shelter, I’ve seen the difference that can be made by patient, compassionate, and consistent staff. I believe that if Seattle cares about helping its most vulnerable residents, we will all come together as a community to invest in making sure that they have access to the highest possible quality of services. Those services can only be provided if staff across all city human services contracts, those patient and compassionate people, can afford to stick around and maintain their own quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Willow. Diane, and Karen, and Queen Bee, are you all together? Because you can have five minutes if you’re speaking as a group.
Right. We—
And separate.
She’s separate, okay. So, we’ve had lots of people come and sign up for us.
Okay, great.
So, thank you. We’re happy to be here. We’re here—I represent the Central Area Senior Center, and we have been in existence for 51 years. It was an organization started by African-Americans so that seniors could have a place to go, have programs and activities. We have been in the building for 51 years, and for 51 years, we’ve been trying to get the city to sell us the property or transfer it to us. We have witnessed many mayors, many staff people have come and gone. We act as a community center for the Madrona Les Chai, Mount Baker community. People come for weddings, for funerals, for celebration. It’s an important institution for African-American people who have a history of being in that facility, but no one in the city seems to be able to make a decision about when the property can be sold or transferred to us. We’re not the only mutually offsetting benefit property that has this problem. We have joined in a partnership with the other mutually offsetting benefit properties who have been waiting forever for someone in the city to figure out what’s the process for making this happen. In 2013, there was a statement, a legislative intent, that properties should be transferred or sold to the organizations that have been doing the work to provide the services to the community. That has not happened, and so now, the mayor—it looks like—is looking at what is the best use for the property. The best use are the existing uses that the properties are already engaged in. And so, I don’t want to take up all the time, but our issue is, we want the city council to step up, do a green sheet if you have to, but make sure that a decision is made and that there’s some clarity. It’s not fair to us—it’s a social justice issue as African-American people—that properties in the Central District have not been turned over to the organizations that have led them for years. So, that’s what we’re requesting today.
Diane, before you leave, I’m going to hand this to Linda. Linda, would you hand the sheet to Diane, get your contact information? I want to call you tomorrow.
Okay, and so Elaine has some words as well?
Okay. The Central Area Senior Center, CASC, has leased the property located at 530th Avenue South from the city of Seattle for 50 years. During that time, CASC has proven itself to be a responsible steward of the property while providing valuable services to seniors and the community at large. The property is now one of which the city has chosen to divest itself and consider a transfer of ownership. CASC is the most logical choice to be the new owner. Under the Board of Directors and Executive Director Diane Ferguson, CSC has met all of the conditions required by the city for the transfer and has demonstrated its commitment and ability to successfully support and maintain this asset. As gentrification rapidly brings major changes to the community, it is especially important to retain a familiar anchor and provide a sense of stability to our longtime members and residents while welcoming and serving the new. Therefore, we respectfully request that you approve the transfer of ownership in the 2019 budget, giving CASC the permanent home it needs to continue its mission and the security it has earned and deserved. And in addition, as an attachment to this, I have 402 signatures from friends of CASC, and what they’ve signed is a statement that says, “We, the undersigned, wholly support and request that the city of Seattle approve the transfer of ownership of 530th Avenue South to the Central Area Senior Center in the 2019 budget.” I have copies for each of the members.
Great. Thank you very much, Karen. Queen Bee, then there is an individual who’s got initials that looks like it might be SM, then Angie, then Tim Orth, and then Karen.
Okay. We are requesting the Central Area Senior Center located on 30th and King. We have requested to be heard. We would like the Central Area Senior Center transfer of the building placed on the Seattle City Council 2019 budget. Over the years, there have been several missed opportunities on both sides, but we have consistently complied with all of the criteria you have placed on us. The center represents our community, our culture, and our heritage. Many of us depend on the center’s education and social programs. We feel that it’s time that we are listened to and acted upon. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is— My name is Winona Hollins-Hague. I’m a native of Seattle, Washington. I am here today to talk about our ownership, hopefully, of the Seattle—I’m getting nervous, obviously—Central Area Senior Center. My mother, who passed away five years ago, not only did she go there for health prevention, but she went there for all of the things that help elders stay young and survive. I believe that we are now in a position—even aside from gentrification—to serve the community that surrounds that center. We are multicultural. We serve all the needs. We have the University of Washington Health Promotion and Research Center programs in there. We have several educational programs, and aside from health programs, we also do counseling and have other services that help seniors age in place. These are the reasons—because of the services that we provide—that I’m here today to say that we do need to retain that center. Again, aside from gentrification, there’s a place for the center, and we are the right people to own that center. We’ve been there for as many years as we have just stated.
51.
51 years, and we do believe we are there for another 51, for our children’s children. So, with your support today, we will engage in a discussion to make sure that the viability and the sustainability of the Central Area Senior Center is a part of our community, and thank you so much for listening.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is George Dix, and in my daytime job, I’m a geriatric mental health specialist at Harborview Mental Health Services, and I’m here to advocate for supporting the Central Area Senior Center. I’ve also been chair of the Mayor’s Council of African-American Elders in the past, and we fought this battle before, trying to sustain the programs and resources that are housed at the Central Area Senior Center. As you are aware, our community has exploded in terms of relocation, but the folks who are left in our community, the homeowners—the Central Area Senior Center is a critical site for what’s left of community, for their ongoing health and identity. These are sites where we have specialized meals, where people receive medical services, and I want to reiterate what my colleague, Winona Hollins-Hague, just said as the chair of the Citizens Advisory Board for the University of Washington Health Promotion Research Center. The Central Area Senior Center is one of the major sites that we use for addressing healthcare disparities. It’s well-known that services and access to and use of services among minority populations is far lower than the general community, and that results in higher costs, higher disability, and prolonged illness. Our research programs are cited there, designed to prevent the onset of severe illness, to address chronic illness, and particularly depression, and we’ve cited a program there called Pearls that has gone nationwide, is now being promoted nationwide. And so, it addresses the disparity issue. We need faces—I think this is not a rocket science thing. People want to see someone that looks like them, especially older folks. We know that older folks are more skeptical and concerned about people who come into their space, ask intrusive questions, and say that they’re on their side. Central Area is a place where people can trust that the information and resources that are provided there are legitimate and will be helpful, and they have been vetted for their security. So, I want to really reiterate the importance of continuing to support the viability of the Central Area Senior Center.
Thank you very much, Central District. I think we’ve got—
Well—
Before you start, we were going to give you five minutes total. Can you give me your name, sir?
My name is Clifford Holland.
All right. Mr. Holland, we’re going to have you be the last speaker on this topic, and then I’m going to get back to the list, and I think it was SM—it looks like Ballot, maybe? Who is—can I have a raise a hand on who? Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, so two more minutes on Senior Center, and then I’m going to turn it over to Mr. SM.
Okay. Like I said, my name is Clifford Holland, and I grew up two blocks from the Central Area Senior Center, and I worked in the Central Area for pretty much all my 37-year career with Safeway. Now, since I retired— Now, since I retired from Safeway, I've spent a lot of time volunteering at the senior center because of the programs that that center offers. I also co-lead a veterans group. I have a lot of my veterans come up there. We have a diabetes center that helps out. So there's just an awful lot of programs that that center offers. And like I say, we moved into our place on 28th Avenue South, two blocks from the center, in 1963. So shortly after that, it became the Central Area Senior Center, so I'm very familiar with that. So that's one of the main reasons why, when I retired, I decided to do a lot of volunteer work up there. And it's just a need that we need to keep on providing, and a service that we need to keep providing to the community, because it has been there for so long, and I just appreciate you people listening to us, and I really, really hope that you consider transferring that property to the Central Area Senior Center staff. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Diane.
And I just want to—I just also want to say thank you. And in conclusion, not only us, but we also advocate for the Greenwood Finney, for Roberta, the Barbird Place, and all of the MBOs who find themselves in the same situation that we are in, where no process and clarification has been developed. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Did we get—did we get number six, Queen Bee?
We are a group.
Okay. Would you give this group five minutes, please? Okay. And then number seven.
Hi, my name is Mary Castillo. I'm with the Wheel Organization. I was homeless for two and a half years, and in my experience during that time, it was not very positive. In fact, it was quite negative until I was introduced to the Wheel Organization. And eventually, I found out that they were looking for staff at their shelter. And when I read their mission statement and all my previous experience with them, I found out what a unique shelter it is. Low barrier, doors open all night if you need it. They treat the women like family. But I think one of the most important things is that the women, their feedback and their information on what they need and how they need it and everything is something that Wheel listens to. And they actually pay attention to it. This shelter is super unique, which is why I applied. And I've been working with them for—I've been a staff at the shelter now for almost six years. And lately, we've had a lot of women that are just really sad and scared because they found out that we're losing our funding. And they are really scared. They come to us crying and begging me to tell them where they should go because they're so scared that when we have to close our doors, they're going to be out there. And we just lost two of our women in the last two weeks. We've had two of our women pass away. The shelter is really, really important for them. They need that safe place to sleep. They need to be treated like human beings. I'm sorry, I can't.
Thank you. Thank you very much for speaking.
Hello, I'm Virginia Wittenberg. We're all human, and we all have different situations that need a shelter and stuff. The Wheel of Women's Shelter has been a home to me. I had to leave a state to save my life. They're trying to make a law. My friends in the highest law of the law are watching me here. They found me in another state. This is the safest place for me to be right now. Like I said, down the road, we all need help. We're all humans. We all need to lean on each other. Please reconsider the funding for the Wheelers Women's Association Shelter. We do need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Seattle City Council members. I am Queen Bee King Rios, a member of Wheel and a leader of women in black. I'm also formerly homeless. I thank God that I was able to find the Share Wheel Shelter Network, because without them, I don't know where I'd be. Being a Wheel participant helped me to gain many skills. Today, I stand here thankful and grateful for the great people who founded and helped organize this awesome network of shelters and community. Women in black have stood a silent vigil for at least 98 deaths so far in 2018 that occurred outside by violence in King County. Fourteen of these deaths were women. We are grief-stricken and sick with sadness. These homeless people are our sisters and brothers. These homeless people are someone's loved ones, and we should love them too. The Wheel Low Barrier Women's Shelter is the only one of its kind in the city. It accepts any woman, anytime, at night, any condition, and it has a no-turn-away policy. Fifty or more women depend on it nightly. We can't let a great shelter like the Wheel Shelter die without sheltered people die. Many women who are scared are counting on you, council members. I've talked with many women who are asking me, "Where are they going to go and what are they going to do if the Wheel Shelter is allowed to close?" They are already in situations where some feel that they are forgotten about. Having the Wheel Women's Shelter has helped many of our city's most vulnerable women have a safe, comfortable, and warm-loving church-based shelter. We must have affordable housing in order for homeless people to live. We need more housing like yesterday. Our city is a public health disaster. Until there's housing for all, we need shelter in the meantime. Please restore the Wheel Shelter funding. Women needed to feel safe. They needed to keep warm and rest. Without it, where are broken women going to turn? Shelter is not a want, it's a need, and we need you, city of Seattle, to restore the funding for this lifesaving shelter. This isn't just the homeless community's problem, it's all of our problem. Thank you, and God bless you. You have the power to change lives.
I would—I would like to say something very quickly.
Okay.
Many years ago, I stood outside at the corner of 3rd and Yessler in November, 3:00 in the morning, with cold rain going down my neck, because I missed sign-in time at Noel House, and I didn't know where else to go. That's why I helped start the Wheel Low Barrier Shelter in 2018 years ago. Please keep it going. Don't leave any woman outside in the rain.
Thank you, Anitra. Thank you very much. And Queen Bee, I appreciate that. Did we—let's have number seven. Did Carolyn Malone speak in that group, the first group that came through?
No, but she left.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And would you please say your name?
Yes, my name is S. Naomi Finkelstein.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'd like to say that I come here as a transgender— as a transgender person, and I'm here to talk about all the ways you could erase transgender lives without being the fascist in the White House. And—to ask you to fund things that actually support transgender lives. And so one of the ways that transgender people are erased—it doesn't take a presidential order to do so. It's never have anything in senior centers that speak to transgender lives and our needs and our health issues and our—and just—that speaks to the community that we could gather together and be with our queer brothers and sisters and cousins and be in a place where people understand even a modicum of what the violence and just the sincere, just not ever having your life validated anywhere that we go through, let alone being—I don't know, isolated. And what's the cost of isolation? The cost of isolation is higher suicide rates, is higher addiction rates, is higher health instances. So if—I'm here to speak for two things, housing and LGBTQ senior center, you're either going to pay one way or the other. It's going to be jail or a senior center. It's going to be Harborview's cost or a senior center. It's going to be burying my friends again and again and again, or you're going to go from $79 measly $1,000 to $250 measly $1,000. Let me just say to you—
Can I ask you to wrap up, please?
Okay, I'll end. People talk forever, please. One hospitalization? One of my hospitalizations cost this state over $50,000. So it's up to you. How are you going to spend the money?
Thank you. Thank you for coming. And if I can just say, we really appreciate you being here, and you're definitely welcome in these chambers. Next round, Angie, then Tim Orth, it looks like Karen Fredrickson, maybe? Beatrix, Kevin Porter, and Barbara again, Barbara Zagoda. Hi. Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Angie from Ballard. I'm a public school parent, a small landlord, and an active community member. I began realizing around 2015 that no one in city government is looking out for communities in a holistic way, especially neighborhoods like Ballard that are undergoing immense growth, change, and challenges. Government is siloed, politics are polarized, no one is responsible for outcomes. During this budget period, I ask you to dig deeply into whatever reservoirs of pragmatism that you may have been hiding from us. This is not an austerity budget, and neither can you save the world. Please focus on the basics of municipal responsibility, individual accountability, and these words from the paragraph—the opening paragraph of the city charter, transparency, ethics, efficiency, and general welfare. These should be progressive words. People in our neighborhood and throughout Seattle have awakened to the realization that despite high ambitions, the city council has disingenuous and expensive impacts, an overly idealistic combination of Groundhog Day and the emperor's new clothes. Please stop the extremism and the era of lawlessness and lawsuits, unsheltered deaths, and public squalor. Thank you.
Angie? Tim? Tim, before you get started, I think the name is Karen Fredrickson, then Beatrix, then Kevin Porter, and I'd ask you to line up, please, so we don't have delays walking back and forth. Thank you. Tim, welcome.
Hi, good afternoon—or good evening. My name is Tim Orth. I'm a 63-year-old gay male living in Seattle. I am concerned by the lack of resources for the senior LGBTQ community in a city of this size and diversity. I think about my future as a gay senior in Seattle, and as I grow older, it worries me when I think about what will happen. Where will I live? How will I be treated by caregivers and staff? Will I be accepted? Or, as many older seniors have experienced, will I be isolated and alone? Our community has come so far since the '60s. However, we have yet to address the special needs of my community in Seattle. Loneliness, isolation, and the loss of a sense of community adversely affects the physical and mental health of this community, many of whom have experienced the struggle to come out and establish a healthy and vibrant life at a time when the vast majority of Americans were strongly anti-gay, only to have to go back into the closet when they go into senior housing. I ask that the council approve funding for Gen Pride LGBTQ senior center and services. Thank you for your time.
Tim, thank you for coming. Are you Karen? And it's—you—are you number 10?
Yes, we're number 10, and we're a group of two people, and then there's another group behind us.
Okay, well, I'm going to let each of you have two minutes. And if I just want to say thank you to all my council colleagues for being here. We are all present and accounted for, including Deborah Waras, who is watching us, and I appreciate the fact that all mine of us are involved. Thank you. Please, Karen, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Karen Fredrickson-Goldson, and I'm the author of Aging a Community: Addressing LGBTQ Inequities in Housing and Senior Services. And I want to thank all the community members that came to be part of this and participated. I first want to thank Councilmember Lorena Gonzalez for providing resources so this work could be done. I also want to thank council members Herbald, Gonzalez, and Sawant for really moving the work forward in terms of the proposal that I'm going to talk about shortly. But I want to thank all of you for your time this evening. As we know, and I'm going to keep my comments low—I had an opportunity to speak at a prior hearing, so I want to just say that LGBTQ elders are the pioneers of our community, of this community, and we know the threat that this community is under just to—just recently with President Trump proclaiming that he's going to define gender, and that we, as a community, have to stand up and that our—all LGBT people, but particularly trans people, being targeted so they can't be their true selves and claim their own genders and identities. So as the report found, there's higher housing risks, there's higher discrimination. But what are we going to do about that? We're going to make Seattle age-friendly. Make Seattle age-friendly by including LGBTQ seniors as pioneers. This is Gen Pride and the University of Washington coming together. Not only—we are behind, as I've spoken about before, but we will actually provide a national model, because with this, we can provide the first-ever evidence-based programs and services. And we want to build community. We want to build and partner with every LGBTQ organization, including Allyship, including many of the others you'll hear from this evening. And we want to partner with all senior centers and all senior services so that we can work together to make sure the needs of our seniors are met, all generations and all seniors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. And what is your number, sir?
I'm number 10. We're a group.
Okay.
Sorry about that, yeah. So, thank you tonight. My name is Stephen Nipp, and I'm the Executive Director of Gen Pride. And I want to thank you all for the support you provided, Lisa and Lorena Gonzalez and Sawant. Thank you very much. So while our community is united one, we also have stories that we hear individuals that are starting that really paints a picture as to why it is so important to have support from those who know us. I want to tell you just one story. Chris Ann's life is a good example of these differences. Chris Ann was a trans woman who came out late in life. Her biological family immediately rejected her, returning her unopened letters with words like, "This person doesn't exist, and this person is dead." She was heartsick, but not willing to deny her happiness any longer. She lived alone and managed well until she was diagnosed with terminal cancer. And her biggest fear wasn't the cancer, but that her family would take possession of her body and erase all evidence of her identity by using her male name at her burial. It was only when the community stepped up and became her guardian that she was able to die in peace. And don't we all need community to hold us up when we're down? None of us can survive in this life alone. We need people that understand us and are a part of our lives. That's why we need LGBTQ-specific services and a place to go where we feel safe, valued, and our wishes known. When AIDS devastated our community 30 years ago, we were having a very similar experience. We were often isolated from families and friends, struggling to survive. So many died not experiencing the support of their biological families. We look back at that time now and are rightfully appalled that our families and our society turned their heads away from us. Let's not do that same thing again this way. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Number 11, Beatrix. Beatrix, then Kevin Porter, then Barbara Zepeda, then Kelly McKinney. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
This is number 11.
We're actually a group. Oh, is it not five minutes for—
Groups are three or more. You got two minutes. And then your friend has two minutes.
Well, I actually was hoping to—there's a couple individuals that could not be here today, and so I was hoping to read for them, but I will just go ahead and try and make it through. Hello, my name is Beatrix Miguelles. I am a trans-identifying American. My parents moved here from Cuba for a much better life, and I feel lucky to live on Capitol Hill because, to me, it is a much better life. I love Seattle. Even while the family and friends that welcomed me with open arms have slowly been priced out, it has remained my home for over five years. I am proud to call this city my home, and I am surprised and disappointed that our city does not already have LGBTQ senior center and services—specialized services for this community. I have no idea who would take care of me as I age, and fear there will not be any services that understand me, or worse, will mistreat me or refuse care because of who I am. This is currently the case for many individuals in my community, and I fear not just for my generation, but for those currently— but for those currently living as senior citizens. I look to my city to continue to champion progressive legislation and take care of senior LGBTQ community members. The federal rhetoric on reforming civil liberties for myself and other parts of my community scares me to my core. But this is why I live here. My community has validated me and loved me, and I am not religious, but I don't know another word to describe the feeling. I feel blessed to be part of my community that has fought to take care of its own for decades, even while others are still questioning which bathroom I can walk into. I want to see my community have a future, and I want to see myself have a future here in Seattle. I would like to voice my concern and support for funding LGBTQ services with special regard to LGBTQ senior center. And I would like to see my city fund training for services and housing for the LGBTQ community. Please take steps to ensure we will not be erased and not forgotten.
Thank you.
If I could, I actually have... Kelly Markham is a 62-year-old trans person who wishes that they had the opportunity and resources of a senior center when they moved to Capitol Hill about three years ago. And thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming. You were very persuasive. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Kevin Porter, then Barbara, then Kelly McKinney, and Heather Villanova.
Hello and good evening. My name is Kevin Porter, and I am a member of the GOT Green, of GOT Green's Food Access Team. And I've been a resident of South Seattle all of my life.
Kevin, before you get started, can I just ask you, are you a group too? Or are you just speaking?
No.
And you've just got support behind you. Okay, good enough.
That's my support.
That's great. Thank you.
No worries. Like I was saying, I love Seattle, but I'm amazed of how expensive it has become to live here. People in my neighborhood are struggling to pay rent bills and put healthy food on the table. Since joining GOT Green's Food Access Team, I've learned about the Fresh Bucks and expansion programs, and look forward to being able to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables from both Safeway and local farmers' markets. My wife and I have been telling our friends, family, coworkers, just about everyone about the program because we know the difference that it will make for them and their families. If the mayor starts taking money from the tax, how can we ensure that over 122,000 families in King County, in the food security gap, will be able to benefit from Fresh Bucks? I believe that the sugary beverage tax is a good idea because of the revenue is going back into the pockets that it is coming out of by way of healthy foods. I am confident that once the mayor starts taking money from the tax and putting it wherever she decides that the community will see that the tax is regressive, and once it goes from low-income and working families to funding the Seattle Police Department, it's not okay. The city implemented this tax to prevent diabetes and child obesity. So let's keep the money where it should be, giving low-income and working families the ability to afford healthy foods. I urge you to say no to the mayor putting a portion of the revenue from the sugary beverage tax into general funding. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kevin. Barbara? Is Barbara Zepeda still here? She spoke about the aquarium. There you are, okay. Barbara, Kelly, Heather. Oh, and then there's a tough one.
Is this supposed to be 13 now?
You are number 13, lucky 13.
I'm Barbara Zepeda, and I had complained earlier about the fact that at a budget hearing, we don't have any summary of the budget. And I did get some copies. But the only time the government tells the truth is on their bond prospectus. And when I worked with the Citizens' Rate Advisory Committee at City Light 30, 40 years ago, we kept to try to find out the truth about nuclear energy so that Seattle wouldn't be embezzled its debt capacity in whoops. The only way we found out what was going on and who was subsidizing what in City Light was to get ahold of a bond prospectus. And if you people who are our city council people ever want to treat the taxpayers with any sort of fairness, you would give them the same information you give the people who hold the debt. Because essentially, in every one of these high-rise buildings, millions of dollars of hidden subsidies from all of the city's utilities and general fund taxes is hidden. Amazon alone got a billion-dollar transformer. It was half a billion plus its own debt. And this is the type of thing that we... Why we have people living in the street? Because just like Wall Street was bailed out with $4 trillion with no requirement that, like FDR made, that the predatory loans were redone so that farmers and homeowners and small businesses could stay in a so-called capitalist society. None of our Democratic leaders or officials at any level of government, from local, state... And I've written Democratic platforms for over 50 years. And young Democrats, when Gaylord Nelson got this horribly radical idea in the young Democrats in the '50s, clean air and clean water was a responsibility of government. And we've done everything but that.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you. I'd like to tell... Barbara, thank you very much. Would you tell whoever is counting noses outside that we've got about 24, 25 chairs in here? So they're very welcome. Okay, 14, 15, and 16 now. Kelly, Heather, and it's...
I was overlooking the previous question.
Hi.
May I speak?
Are you Kelly? Yes, of course you are.
It was our understanding that we were gonna sign up as a group. So there are two of us. So I'm gonna let John speak on our behalf.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, John.
Thank you, Kelly.
John, since there's just two of you, why don't you take three minutes and let's move on.
Okay. Thank you, council members. Kelly and I are members of the D5 Community Network. And tonight, I want to communicate widespread community support for the continued expansion of LEED, the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program. This year, the program was expanded for the first time to North Seattle, including the Aurora Corridor, Ballard, and the U District. In just three months, LEED reached its projected number of referrals for the entire year. The plan all along has been a steady expansion of LEED across the city at a deliberate pace that allows for community outreach, recruitment of effective case managers, and careful training of police officers involved with the program. The additional $1 million per year requested for the 2019-20 budget would allow expansion into Lake City, as well as the South and Southwest precincts, and for expanding clients from low-level offenders in RV and vehicle residence to others in extreme poverty or with more acute mental health issues. This program works. It turns lives around, reduces crime, and reduces costs to the criminal justice system. Secondly, I want to emphasize the community's interest in renewing planning for replacement of the North Precinct Police Building. This planning should include consideration of dividing the North Precinct in two or the addition of satellite facilities. The North Precinct currently is about twice the size of any other precinct in terms of geographic area and population served. East-west transportation corridors across the North Precinct are few and crowded. Response times for Priority One calls to the western parts of the precinct were by far the longest in the city of Seattle in a Seattle Times study, averaging almost twice the department's target time of seven minutes. This is failing a huge number of people. And I'll give the rest of the time to Kelly.
Thank you. All right. Kelly and John, thank you. George, I understand that you wanted to be with a group.
I was supposed to be with the number nine people, but I couldn't walk over there.
Okay, please, go ahead. We're gonna give you two minutes.
Thank you. My name is George Baigan. I'm a civic activist going back for about 45 years in the gay community. I actually own and publish the Seattle Gay News. I'm here to speak on behalf of the senior center proposal. And I want to mention a community that hasn't been mentioned in particular. Within the city, there are thousands of gay men who survived the AIDS epidemic but are HIV-positive or have otherwise health-impaired statuses. They have to be treated fairly and well. And a senior center would say to them, "Welcome, we can help you with whatever problem you are having." It's an unspoken community because, thank God those years are over, but the residue is still there. And they're at my age level, I'm 78. And I want to speak to the center, which should be the accommodating place for many populations, trans people, older gay men. Everybody can feel secure and comfortable, and it will generate project after project. It's not like we're brain-dead, but we really don't have a nexus where we can gather and say, "Here's another idea. What can we do? How can we better serve this population? How can we more effectively disperse the money to make sure this problem is solved?" So I really want to advocate for this project. I think it will be a commendable step forward for the city of Seattle as a leader. And in all truth, community centers have died over and over in the gay community for lack of money. Community centers need money. And I applaud your efforts to talk about funding this center. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George, for coming. Next is number 15 is Heather. 16, I think it's Julia. Okay. And then Quinn Pham is 17.
Hi. Hi, my name is Heather Villanueva. I'm here on behalf of 45,000 caregivers united in SEIU 775. Caregivers make up a diverse workforce and care for people with diverse backgrounds. No matter who we are, all people are impacted by these census. The federal administration has massively underfunded the 2020 census and is pushing to add a question about citizenship status, which is driving up fear, will drive down response rates, and render our communities invisible to our own government. These tactics are xenophobic and racist. If communities of color and immigrants and other vulnerable communities are made to be invisible, how can we effectively plan to be the city that we want to be? One that is inclusive, welcoming to all people, a place where people's basic human needs are met, and that revels in the innovation and vibrant culture that diversity brings? We support a dedicated staff person, which will help focus the city's efforts and enable the city to cooperate deeply with and be held accountable to community-based organizations that are focused on historically undercounted groups. We support your allocation of $150,000, which will build capacity where it's most needed in historically under-resourced communities. Three more things. I want to reiterate SEIU 775's support for the additional staff at the Office of Labor Standards to enforce protections won through the Domestic Workers Bill of Rights and encourage funding for community-based organizations who work most closely with these workers. Second, we're also excited to support council member Musqueiras' proposal to look at barriers and incentives to opening and operating family childcare homes and centers in the city. Lastly, it is always the right time to support the trans and gender-diverse community. But especially now, Seattle needs to hold the line. Please fully fund the trans economic empowerment program being led by Ingersoll Gender Center.
Thank you very much. You said Julia?
Julia.
Okay. May I just... Julia, before you get started, we've got number 17 is Quinn. Then 18 is Asmaret Habdi. 19 is Carter. 20 is Emress Takahashi.
Good evening, council members. My name is Julia Pachuto. I'm a policy analyst at Puget Sound Sage. I'm sure that you'll hear the phrase multiple times tonight. A budget is the statement of our values as a city. And it's true. So far, the mayor's budget, as it comes to you, doesn't reflect the values we purport to have. This budget pits communities of color, low-income people, and queer and trans folks against each other for a small piece of the pie. I don't envy the decisions you will have to make in the next couple of weeks, but urge you to make decisions based on our intersectional racial justice values. I'm here to ask you to fully fund the Equitable Development Initiative. The EDI is the city's solution to mitigating the displacement that is exacerbated by our strategies for growth. Essentially, the EDI is a community-generated solution to development without displacement and preventing more households from entering into homelessness. The program funds projects that creates new affordable housing, supports community jobs and businesses, and helps build the long-term capacity to keep communities at highest risk of displacement in place. In 2017, we won a commitment of $5 million a year from the short-term rental regulations to fund the EDI. The mayor's budget took 20% of that source to fund staff time, which should have been covered by the general fund. That's money that historically redlined and under-invested in communities desperately need to secure land and build capacity to stop displacement. We're asking you to make good on the promise for a permanent funding source for the EDI and replace the 1.1 million. We urge you to restrict this revenue source moving forward so we don't find ourselves in this situation again.
Thank you, Julia. Then Asmaret, Carter, and Emress? Please.
Hi, my name is Quinn Pham. I'm with the Friends of Little Saigon,
I'm with the Friends of Little Saigon, but here today representing as a member of the Race and Social Equity Task Force. As mentioned before in so many words, Seattle's growth is outpacing and leaving behind some of the most marginalized, low-income communities and communities of color. Little Saigon in particular was originally established to give a home to the thousands of Vietnamese immigrants and refugees that lost their country. Over time, these same immigrants and refugees are the ones that built small businesses and have become members of the community that have invested economic and social capital into the neighborhood to ensure that it stays a thriving and connected place for the Vietnamese and greater Seattle community. But due to massive redevelopment and policies that have not benefited our community, we slowly are feeling that we're losing our sense of place. Displacement of businesses and cultural institutions have occurred, and now our communities are trying our best to hold on what's left. And as we try to rebuild, we need the city's investment. It's devastating that it's not just Little Saigon, but other communities have gone through or are currently experiencing the same threats and pressures. So I ask you, councilmembers, how will you stop displacement and support the growth of our communities? Along with our task force partners, our ask today is to restore the $5 million generated through the short-term rental tax towards the Equitable Development Initiative, or EDI, with a permanent and sustainable funding source at $20 million per year, as well as create a restricted fund for the short-term rental tax to ensure that the first $5 million go to EDI projects only. Full investment in the EDI will be able to support organizations like ours and communities like Little Saigon to advance decades-plus longer visions of a cultural and community center and community-driven.
Thank you, Quinn. Before you start, can I just call a few names? Carter, Emress, and then number 21 is Nancy. Please.
Good evening. My name is Asmaret Obahate, and I'm here to ask Seattle City Council to fully fund Equitable Development Initiative on behalf of the Multicultural Community Center. This is a coalition of community organizations that are requesting the full funding of the EDI, which is the $5 million for this year and each year following. The eight organizations are Horde of Africa Services, Somali Community Services of Seattle, Oromo Community of Seattle, Chinese Information Service Center, Eritrean Association of Greater Seattle, Urban Family, Vietnamese Friendship Association, Eritrean Community Center of Seattle. On behalf of the 10,000 residents of Seattle, the eight MCC organizations represent, we are asking City Council to deliver on the promise of direct project funding for Equitable Development Initiative. The $5 million per year, we are facing displacement, and these community organizations and these cultural anchors are the only thing that we have left. The MCC Coalition is looking to do a shared project so that these community centers can stay together in one location on Othello and Martin Luther King Way. And so this reduction of funding slows that project down. So we're asking you to restore it. We're asking you to really speak to the fact that what anchoring in place means for all of these organizations. Like I said, we are not going to use EDI to split these communities apart, as they have listed the eight organizations. They are all looking to stay, their cultural anchor centers, to stay in Seattle, as their people have already been replaced. So I want to thank you for your time. The individuals live within your councils throughout the city, and so we're really looking at each of you and the decisions that you make of how you really implement equitable development and how you really look to mitigate some of the redlining and some of the historic institutional racism that has occurred in Seattle.
Thank you. Number 19?
Yeah, we're a group.
Okay. The whole crowd are there?
Yeah.
Okay. You'll have five minutes.
Honorable councilmembers, thank you. I'm Marcia Botzer. I'm with Equal Rights Washington, Generation Aging with Pride, Martin Luther King County Labor Council, but tonight I am here speaking for my team from Ingersoll Gender Center. I am so proud of this team, and you'll hear from them. Goodness sakes, I founded Ingersoll in 1977, and we've been at it ever since. We have saved hearts, minds, and individuals for decades, and we're here to ask you to help us continue to do this project. May I introduce Carter Bora, our executive director.
So I'm not Carter, I'm Grayson, but I'm here on behalf of STEEP, Seattle Trans Economic Empowerment Program and Ingersoll Gender Center. STEEP does vital economic empowerment work around housing and employment for the trans community. We've supported over 150 different community members through financial support, referrals, coaching, and kind of group discussion through our existing support group. I specifically want to bring out a couple of community members that we've supported, thinking about folks that we've supported through moving through multiple shelters and eventually getting to the point where they were experiencing enough transphobia and discriminations in the shelter system that they had to leave the city of Seattle because they could not find a viable housing situation for them here. We've supported community members in navigating, finding employment after over three years of not being able to find employment. And when we look at some of the community members that we're lucky enough to support, we're often working with folks that other systems and other social services aren't able to support. So we think our work is vital to the trans community, vital because we are a buy-in for a trans organization. So I'm going to pass it over to Lee.
How you doing? My name is Lee Williams, and I work with PoKan, People of Color Against AIDS Network, and I'm here representing PoKan as well as myself. As you all know, PoKan's been doing work in the community since 1987, and we're in partnership with Ingersoll for the Trans Economic Empowerment Coalition, which is really exciting, as some of the issues that other folks have brought out, that folks of color are facing in this city, it's important that they're supported around this economic development work. We know that folks of color, especially Black and Brown folks who are trans, are disproportionately impacted by these barriers to housing, to employment, and I ask that you continue to support them because it makes a difference between surviving and thriving, especially here in Seattle. Thank you.
My name is Carter. I want to start by thanking so many of you who made the time to meet with us earlier this month to talk about the important work that happens at Ingersoll. At 41 years old, we're one of the nation's oldest trans-led organizations based right here in Seattle. I hope many of you read the news this weekend from the New York Times and really took to heart what a lot of trans folks have been saying, that this federal administration has a methodical and explicit plan to eradicate trans folks from our communities. And organizations like Ingersoll are really the first line of defense in making sure that so many of the organizations that the city funds that quite frankly fail trans and gender diverse folks are held accountable and are supported to do the right thing and make sure that our folks have access to services. This project was founded years ago, like many of the things at Ingersoll, by trans people who themselves couldn't find work, couldn't find housing, and were helping each other. Trans folks are twice as likely to have a college degree as non-trans folks, but three times more likely to be unemployed. 28% of trans Washingtonians live in poverty, and 33% of trans Washingtonians will be homeless at some point in their lifetime, and that is higher than the national average for trans folks. We know that the city is experiencing a housing crisis, and that we ask you, as you're rightly investing in solutions, that trans folks are centered in that conversation. And the majority of the trans folks that we serve choose to sleep outside because shelters are not safe for them, and we know that 70% of the folks who do enter the shelter system experience harassment or violence, which is often physical. In the last six months since we've received city funding, we've helped over 120 people with direct service, we've connected 60 community members to direct legal support, we've helped provide 70 community members with direct financial assistance, including amending identity documents and accessing gender-friendly clothes, because it can cost upwards of $450 in King County to amend your identity documents. And we have broad support from community partners like Youth Care, Martin Luther King Labor Council, SEIU, Country Doctor, PoKan, GSBA, Gay City, Utopia, and the Seattle Human Services Coalition. And we just urge you to continue supporting this really vital work, particularly during this time.
Thank you, Carter. Okay, well, thank you very much. Marcia from Ingersoll, well-introduced. So then 20, who is 20?
Us.
All right. And who is us?
Hi, I'm Siobhan Kenny.
I'm Emress Takahashi.
I'm Michael McKinnon.
I'm Juby Yunkins.
I'm Marcus Lindenberg.
And I'm Michaela Walls. We're students from, at the center school.
Nice. Welcome.
It's easy to think that the youth don't know much, but our lives are surrounded by little details that become more and more noticeable when you put them under a magnifying glass.
We grew up in the shadows of crises we still face today.
My Me Too moment came at the age of 14, and I was too scared to say anything.
We grew up beside classmates who don't know if they can go home at the end of the day.
In our schools, we learned that the administration doesn't care quite enough to protect us. Now our mayor is trying to cut a sexual assault attorney who represents hundreds of survivors a year. What message is this sending to young women?
These demographics are more than statistics.
In high school, we meet the 2 million transgender youth driven from their homes.
And the parents just trying to keep their kids alive.
Public safety is the largest expenditure in the general fund. 9.95 million going to the chief of police budget alone.
$65 million in BAP and we're still trying to remember Sharlina's name.
Say her name.
These programs serve to victimize our most vulnerable citizens in high school. We learn to keep our heads down when police officers walk by.
It's time to put less money in police and more getting kids off the streets.
I don't need a statistic to know what our homeless population is.
Neither do you. Lorena Gonzalez, you've banned youth conversion therapy and helped to create a legal defense network for immigrants and refugees. These demographics benefit from services provided by the Seattle Human Service Coalition. Without funding to these programs, imagine how quickly these people would fall behind, hurting the work you've done to bring them forward.
As Raleigh Watts, a member of the Seattle Human Services Coalition, said, "Officials are elected by neighborhoods but reelected by businesses. Public policy created the homelessness we see today, and public policy can fix it."
Do you want to be a pawn of corporations or a champion of the people?
Corporate buildings pop up like invasive ivy. They're vines choking out the homes that resided there before. When I walk outside, I'm faced with the question of if I have enough to spare, and I'm both sorry. I don't have any change before I can stop the reflex.
We ignore to soothe ourselves, turn a blind eye to suffering while housing has become a privilege.
Do you believe everyone deserves somewhere to live?
Addiction, mental illness, and disabilities should not restrict someone from having a place to live.
Bruce Harrell, you're raising your family in Seattle. When you step out onto the street, there are plenty of parents raising theirs, too. How different are you? 70% of working homeless could afford $500 for rent, but they can't leave their younger kids at home as they rush off to their jobs.
It would take $800 million to solve the homeless crisis, yet only 89 million is being put towards the problem.
This summer, we all breathed in smoky air from wildfires, but pollution affects some more than others. Residents in South Park and Georgetown are more likely to have asthma, diabetes, and colorectal cancers at the Seattle PI.
Mike O'Brien, healing our environment builds cleaner air and a better future, but who gets to breathe that crisp air, the rich or the poor? I'm lucky to live in your district where we have more trends and less pollution, but South Park and Georgetown get the power plants near the Duamish. People on the streets in that area deal with pollution to the extreme. If we make a cleaner Seattle, let's make it cleaner for everyone.
Every Seattleite has experienced our traffic jams, and I'm sure every driver wants to put an end to it.
Deborah Juarez, who is not here in the chambers to be addressed. You're the city council member for my district, and your efforts for new transportation have helped us to make a more accessible city, but I-5 has homeless encampments along it. People with nowhere else to go, less than half of the populations in encampments, end up receiving assistance after a sweep. I see these encampments every day by my apartment in North Gate. Sweeps do not solve this problem. These people always return, they have nowhere else to go. This is a system that does not serve them effectively.
Sweeping something under the rug doesn't mean it's not there.
Sally Bagshaw, you're chair of the Budget Committee and District 7's representative of the district our school lies in. The Human Services Department can always be doing more. Your connections and your position give you the ability to make the changes our budget needs.
217 shelter units are being cut as well as spaced for over 50 people, and this isn't something you can hide. The 500 shelter units that we are being told are carried over are simply being carried over from the 2018 budget.
We need solutions that save our people's future, not ones that save the city's picture.
This is the mayor's proposal, but it's your choice. Thank you.
Are you 20?
21.
21. So who is Emress?
I thought she was asking her age.
Did we miss 20?
They were 20.
She's part of the group, but not part of you?
That was her. She was there. She was in the group.
Okay, very good. So Nancy, then 22 is Abisha. 23, Johnny. 24, Ari, and 25, Nepom. So if you will all get close to the microphone, please.
I'll be giving a testimony on behalf of Tanika Thompson of GOT Green on the sugary beverage tax. First, I would like to thank Councilmember O'Brien for his continued support of community and speaking out for our best interests. I believe that it's very important that we secure the revenue from the sugary beverage tax and ensure that it goes back to low-income and working families in the food security gas pockets. We fought hard to bring the voice of the community to the table about the issues that they are facing and what they need most. Low-income and communities of color need access to healthy and affordable food. I can honestly tell you that they don't want money coming out of their pockets into the pockets of Seattle police, and that is exactly what the mayor wants to do. Taking any portion of the revenue from this tax and putting it into the general fund turns it into a regressive tax, which is something the GOT Green Food Access Team cannot and will not stand for or support.
I know that you, the city council, know how hard the community has worked to ensure this tax has positive outcomes, and taking healthy food off the tables of low-income and working families is not a positive outcome. Please do the job that we are counting on you all to do and reserve all revenue from the tax for low-income communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. 22? 22?
And we're a group.
Okay. How many do you have?
Me and Malaysia.
Okay, so, just so I've got this, is 23 part of your group?
No.
Okay. All right, you get five minutes.
Awesome. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Johnny Fickeroo, and I'm with GOT Green, and today we are rocking with the Budget for Justice Coalition, and we are calling on the city council to support the Green Pathways proposal. Green Pathways is a green career fellowship program that places communities of color into environmental organizations. Our fellows will have access to leadership development trainings led by Rainier Valley Corps. And the best part is, our fellowship positions are designed to be both entry-level positions and pay livable wages. What we're talking about is a program that centers its work on building leaders from communities most impacted from climate change, and at the same time, we are talking about economic justice and worker dignity, because the same folks who are experiencing environmental racism also tend to be the same folks who are experiencing economic inequality, the same folks who are often overworked and underpaid. Green Pathways is seeking to change that. We are making sure that our people are working good, clean, meaningful work. We're fighting climate justice with economic justice, and it can be done. But let me make myself clear, the Green Pathways program, it's not about what the green sector can offer Black or Brown folks, but it's what the sector is missing out on. It's missing out on our skills, our gifts, our talents, and our leadership. You know, that recent climate report said that we have 12 years left to mitigate Earth's warming temperatures, and that we got to make significant changes in how we operate in this world. I see the Green Pathways program as kind of the necessary transition that we need to take on tomorrow's problems today. It was two years ago today where GOT Green's young leaders organized and mobilized with community members and city council members to pass the Green Jobs Resolution. The resolution said that the city is committed to advancing green careers for young folks of color. Two years later, we have our own fellowship program, and we have an incredible partner organization like Rainier Valley Corps. More importantly, we have a program that we believe in and know will work. So support the ideas that come from young folks of color, support the Budget for Justice Coalition and everything that they believe in, and support Green Pathways. Thank you.
My name is Malaysia, and I'm here today with GOT Green, and I want to share my own personal testimony and why this fellowship program is so important to me. So for most of my life, I lived in a low-income, single-parent household. When I was seven, my dad left, leaving my mother with a heavy financial burden that eventually led us to being evicted from our home. Like many others who battle with housing instability, my brothers and I were deprived from the day-to-day consistency that kids need. We were all sent to live with various relatives and bounce between 10 different schools until graduating high school. Thankfully, my mom was adamant to keep us in the best school district in the metro Atlanta area by any means necessary. She understood the value of a ZIP code. As a student, I was drawn to the creative science of architecture and design. More specifically, I was intrigued by how the built environment influences behavior and thinking, which eventually led me to pursue these studies in college. But confronted with financial difficulties and mounting stress, I decided to step away from college for a year to refocus. Thankfully, through my school experiences, I was able to volunteer throughout the South, in New Orleans and Savannah specifically. It was during these experiences that I, myself, began to understand the value of a ZIP code. I witnessed firsthand how much a ZIP code determines one's access to healthy food, transportation, and education, how much of an impact a ZIP code has on one's well-being and access to resources. I began to understand how this impacts future opportunity, life trajectory, and how interwoven systematic inequalities and inequities and environmental injustices have become in America, particularly within low-income and communities of color. So upon completing college, I moved to Seattle to pursue opportunities where I can combine my knowledge of design with policy, environmental services, and community engagement. But despite Seattle's reputation for being welcoming and diverse, I found these fields to be overwhelmingly underrepresented by people of diverse backgrounds. Where there's a lack of opportunity, there will also be a lack of diversity. Too often, the access to opportunity is also tied to your community, your education, and your heritage. Diversity and inclusion should be more than just optics, it should reflect something more, a commitment to a shared culture. Simply having a seat at the table is not enough, but we must become intentional in creating opportunities for dialogue. We have a voice, so come and sit with us and hear our stories, because those closest to the problem are often closest to the solution. And so this is why the Green Pathways Fellowship Program is urgent. This program creates access to opportunity, forums for dialogue, and promotes diversity and inclusion. When underrepresented people are provided tools and ultimately opportunity, it holds the potential to completely change the trajectory for an individual's future. And when this opportunity comes, it becomes even important for those who receive access to advocate for others to have that same access for an equal opportunity. Today, I live by the statement, "Once you break through a barrier, don't forget to look back." It's important for us to recognize the power we have, even as Black and Brown people in America, and it's important that we enable others along the way.
Yes, we're 23.
23, Johnny?
Yes. We just switched numbers.
Okay. So would you all introduce yourself?
Yeah. My name is Flo. I'm with Rainier Valley Corps on behalf of Seattle Human Services Coalition and Budget for Justice and Green Pathways.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Asha Shafar. I'm with Rainier Valley Corps Program Director.
Good evening, Vule with Rainier Valley Corps.
Nice to see you. And we're a group, so we're just going to be the three of us, and everyone else is a supporter. So I'm here to talk about just why it's so urgent for the Green Pathways to happen. In part, it's the political climate, and in part, the communities demand it, and so much of the work for more people of color, leadership and representation, has been cried for and asked for for decades, and we're taking our power to make that happen. We're creating this Green Pathways Fellowship Program in collaboration with GOT Green to say we're done waiting. We're done waiting for structures and processes to figure out how to invest in equitable representation and living wage jobs, and we're doing that work right now. And we want the city council to also support that work, that we, as a community organization, will also be working on our own way to break the green ceiling, and we want to have that as a supplemental part of the work, because that's, we can't do this alone, but we also will not wait. And that is why it's super important for y'all to support this piece. Thank you.
Hello again, thank you for your time. I'm here in support of the Green Pathway proposal and fellowship program in partnership with GOT Green. My name is Asha Shafar, like I said, and I am the Fellowship Program Director at Rainier Valley Corps. In the summer of 2017, we welcomed our second cohort of emerging leaders, fellows. We placed 12 incredible fellows at 11 community-based organizations led by communities of color. Our fellows program is immensely successful and contributes to building the capacity of communities of color-led organizations in Seattle. Over the course of the last three years, we recruited, hired, and trained 27 emerging leaders in our communities. They've developed strong and lifelong bonds, strengthened their leadership skills, and learned the skills in nonprofit management and capacity building. Following the completion of our first fellows, six out of 10 were placed and hired at the organizations. organizations and helped to strengthen programs, fundraising, operations, and whatever the organizations needed to be successful. And just after our first year, three were able to be hired at the organizations, and that really speaks to the success of the program and the impact that this fellowship program has on our partners. To give you a more specific example, 2016, RVC Fellow Marion Romero was a key part of the organizing team in helping City Council pass the Green Pathway Resolution. And today, our fellow, who you just heard from, Jonathan Fickrou, is here leading the efforts to get us funded for this program. Community solutions and community-led programs innovations are critical to addressing the inequities that exist in our city, particularly as city grows impossibly near, impossible to live in and thrive in, and becomes near impossible for young folks to live and thrive and work in the city. It's imperative that City Council allocates funds and gives people, young people of color, low-income folks, access to living wage jobs, have opportunities to develop their skills, high skills, and necessarily to be changemakers and open new opportunities that allow them to live in the city with dignity, invest in their time, invest their time and skills in jobs that are meaningful to them. I urge you to support this proposal and support communities of color. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmember. My name is Voulay. I'm with Rainier Valley Corps. We were founded a few years ago to address a couple of really critical issues. One is that we don't have enough people of color in the nonprofit sector, and also organizations led by communities of color do critical work, but they still struggle for funding, and they're often left behind in many of the decision-making in our city and just across the U.S. in general. So we started a fellowship program, where we find these leaders of color, provide them with a job for two years, and send them to work at these amazing organizations. And actually, you all were instrumental to funding this program, so thank you very much for all your help these past few years. That program has been so successful now that we are now using what we have learned to create the Green Pathways Fellowship Program in partnership with GOT Green, and it's gonna be totally awesome. We're gonna find all these leaders of color and provide them with jobs in environmental organizations, because we have been talking about the lack of diversity in the green movement for long, long enough. It's time for us to do something about that, and we are really excited. So thank you. Please support the Budget for Justice. Please support Human Services Coalition's recommendations, and please support the Green Pathways Fellowship Program. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Are you, tell me your name, please.
Ari Hoffman.
All right, Ari, would you mind if we let this group of 40 Vietnamese seniors speak before you?
I would love to have them speak, but I'm in a little bit of a rush. So is it possible to have their group representatives speak, and then I speak?
Why don't you go ahead, and then we'll take all of them on?
I appreciate that, and thank you very much. My name is Ari Hoffman. I'm from District 2, and because of the inaction of this City Council on multiple issues, including safety, I've decided to run in the next 2019 election for District 2 Chair. This was not an easy decision. I decided to run because I can't take the chance of anything else happening to our cemeteries, to our businesses, to our homes, and to our children. If it was me, the contract with the Police Department would be approved already and not take four years to sign off on. It is disappointing to me that this could jeopardize our Police Department and law and order in this city. Right now, I know that some of you aren't listening to me, and you're looking at your cell phones instead, and that's disappointing, because the problem has been that so many of you have not been listening to us this entire time. I think that the rest of the city is listening now, and I'm glad that I met so many other people and so many wonderful people who realize that we have to make public safety number one. I'm a proud member of Speak Out Seattle. I stand with them to help save our city and keep it safe from the policies you have all enacted. Thank you very much.
All right. I'm sorry, what is your name?
David Preston.
David, I don't have an--
I'm part of--
He's my plus-one.
I'm not going to go there. Had you signed up, we would let you speak, but I've got a group here waiting, and I don't see your name on the sheet.
Okay.
I know, but he could have signed up.
Well, everybody read Safe Seattle and homelessindustrialcomplex.com.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Lynn, are you here to introduce? Do you want to come up, Ms. Lynn? I assume that this is your group.
Adam, Chair, as they come up, I just want to state for the record, I think this council's been really clear in the past that this is not a forum for any stump speeches or announcements of public office, and I just want to make sure that the people who've come to speak about the budget get the chance to do that. So I appreciate your leadership on that and that we've been vocal about that and continue to adhere. I appreciate your leadership on this.
Thank you very much. All right, welcome, all of you. And Ms. Lynn, do you want to introduce your group? The people that Ari is too important to let go before him.
I will run.
Thank you, everyone. Councilmember, thank you, thank you. I love you all. Thank you so much for supporting the Vietnamese Senior Association. It meant a lot for us, and I'm truly sorry that we took a little spot before you. Councilmember, we just want to say thank you so much for the senior to come up and speak today. I'm going to give the mic phone to the speakers.
Are you gonna be interpreting?
No, we have interpreter today, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much, ma'am.
So Wendy?
We, the Vietnamese Senior Association Group, we come here to say thank you very much for the help last year, but as we know, aging unavoidable. Seniors, the group, we need to get out and about, and we need a place to be together. That is, we have here Vietnamese Senior Association Center, the community center. And operating the senior community center is a hard work. We cannot, you know, talk a lot, but we would like to let all of you know that we work together with love and with attention to the physical, social, and emotional needs. That's why we try to come here to help the need from county somehow we can funding in helping our senior group as senior center to help them have a good life and not feel out of touch in the world.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, my name is Bruce Lee. I'm here to support the VSA, Vietnamese Senior Association. We would like to thank you very much for your help funding us on the bus. With the funding, we provide a lot of meal, food bank, activity program for senior. And I'm very strongly encourage you to continue to support us on the funding, so we can continue our program to help our senior. All the help is very appreciated by us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ming Ho Hwang. I'm here on behalf of the Vietnamese Senior Association to deeply appreciate for your help in the past, and I'd like to ask for your continued to support us on maintaining of this association, so we can have a chance to communicate with the elderly people who are isolated themselves in the apartment, and now they have a chance to get together there. We can learn a lot of things from the association. One more time, I'd like to appreciate for your help and then ask for your continued to help us in the future.
Hello, sisters and marines. My name is Tho Li. Yes, first of all, we would like to thank all of you about the supplemental funding for this year. It helped us for the transportation as many best tickets, so that we can go to the VSA more often than before. It occasioned, it helped us to prepare a special meal, the food making us recall Vietnamese dishes that we love so much, but also provided healthy nutrition. We also use that funding for a short trip, like going to Canada and Buddhist Pagoda. If we go by ourselves, we might worry about language difficulty or getting lost or just feel isolated and unsafe. Yeah. So thank you. So thank you, thank you very much. And we want to thank you, Mr. Jonathan, and Lynn, to take time to visit our--
Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you so much. Councilmember, all we ask is, would you kindly please support the Vietnamese Senior Associations with your fund? Last year, they was able to get out of the house and enjoy the field trip to Canada, and they also took a trip to visit ten temples. So they did a lot of food, they got a food bank, you know, the food to give it to the senior to bring home after the activities. So I just really, really appreciate, I'm a little emotional. If you have a chance, you could stop by the Vietnamese Senior Association and Gaffield Center on Tuesday and Friday to see their activities, and you will see all these senior, they're really, really happy when they get together, so.
Nice.
Thank you so much on behalf of the VSA.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you, Councilmembers. All right, I'm gonna pick up with 25. 25, Nepom. 26, Gina. 27, Erin. 25, 26, and 27. And thank you all for waiting. I appreciate your group's patience.
And we have signed up for a group time as well.
Very good.
Thank you.
And who else? Are you, are you group 25?
Yes.
Just so I've got this, all right, very good. Do you want to all introduce yourselves, please?
Yeah, my name's Hillary Coleman, and I work with the Seattle King County Coalition on Homelessness.
My name is Nepom Shah. I work with the Seattle King County Coalition on Homelessness.
I'm Hallie Cranis. I'm with the Coalition on Homelessness.
I'm Livia De La Cruz. I'm volunteering with the Coalition on Homelessness.
Nikki Omarantidash, I'm on the board of Seattle King County Coalition on Homelessness. Work at Seattle Pacific University.
My name is Andy Tilton, and I'm a supervisor at the DESC for Case Managers.
And I invite, we have many Coalition on Homelessness folks in the room. If anyone feels like a stretch break and you want to stand up and join us in solidarity, I invite you to do so. Also, if anyone signed our orange postcards tonight, that means you support our priorities. So I'm gonna keep my part brief, but you've all seen our priorities that we have. I finally am delivering the promised postcards today. We have over 450 postcards for each of you, your districts, and Nepom and Hallie are gonna read some messages in a few minutes. But I just want to reiterate that the Coalition on Homelessness is asking you all to prioritize building more housing in our budget, so at least $26 million to build more housing and then to buy down rents for folks. We want to make sure that we're not cutting the share in wheel shelters, those 217 spaces. We also want to make sure that we are not losing the 53 harm reduction spaces at Licting Springs. Finally, we want to support our workers. So as you heard earlier this afternoon, Councilmember Mosqueda and O'Brien's proposals about making sure that we are supporting our, all of our contracts, both the ones that are general fund and the ones that are passed through with inflation parts. But now I'm gonna ask Andy and some others to share personal messages from the community.
Hi there. So I work at the DESC in a clinical mental health case management program. We offer psychiatry, peer support, employment specialists, the whole nine yards. I've been there for four years. I was a case manager and a therapist before that, and in that time, I've probably seen three or four cohorts of case managers come and go. The shortest amount of time that someone is there is a week. The longest is, you know, your whole career, but the average is usually six months to a year. And I've also seen two or three cohorts of supervisors come and go. And the issue is that people who are traumatized, people who are, you know, when they are children, they are abused, neglected, fill in the blank. If you are curious about that research, please look at the Adverse Childhood Effect Study. It's very clear that these people end up with severe mental illness, severe substance abuse issues, and these people are the most unlikely to want to trust us, especially if they've been through the system for X number of years and had Y number of case managers. It's not likely that they're going to open up after a week, a month, it might be six months, it might be a year before they want to really work on things with their case manager. Now, trauma is also a negative feedback loop. Trauma begets trauma. Being homeless, being on the street, living outside is traumatizing, and it's a self-perpetuating process. Now, we can continue to invest money in ER services, fire departments, the police, et cetera, et cetera, and we can also choose to spend money on permanent supportive housing, on case management programs, on the evidence-based therapy and case management that I teach my case managers and that we do at DESC. And I appreciate the time, and I appreciate everyone else who has spoken today, and thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
I'm now going to read some messages from some of your constituents that we have collected over the past few weeks. Councilmember Bruce Harrell, a street outreach nurse who lives in your district, has noted that the city spends vastly more money displacing people instead of housing people. Councilmember Sawant, someone from your district says that we need to make Seattle a place where everyone has a shot at living a comfortable life. In order to succeed, people need the foundation of a home to grow from. We cannot address all the other variables that affect, that create the homelessness crisis unless we provide people with housing.
I'm Hallie. I'm with the Coalition on Homelessness. Before I was at the Coalition, I worked with folks that were experiencing homelessness in Seattle since 2010. I can just tell you that what has changed is the lack of deeply affordable housing. It's not the service providers, it's not the people that are homeless themselves, except those, the services are now overrun. What's changed is the lack of housing. I have some postcards to read from, it's a little, from District 5. "I drive by tents and homeless people every day on my way to work, doing errands, going anywhere in Seattle. This is a crisis. It is not okay for people to live on the street. As a Christian, I ask you to help." From District 6, oh, oh, okay. Sorry. From District 6. "Please support our neighbors. People that are homeless, who work in homeless service providers, often become homeless themselves." That's true. I know many of them. People are so close to the poverty line. Sorry. Thanks.
And also, really quickly, I forgot to mention, we support the Budget for Justice, and we also want to make sure that we are supporting the Coalition in any gender-based violence, and Councilmember Gonzalez's proposal to make sure that we are continuing funding for the DV services.
Right, Hillary, thank you so much. Thanks, all of you, for coming tonight. So now, I think we're up to 26. And do you have a group as well?
That's, yes.
Okay, so who's all here with you?
No, I've been here for almost two hours, and we're only at the 26.
These three, myself.
Okay, so have you all signed up?
Yes.
Okay, so give me your numbers, will you, please? Are you 27?
26.
26.
26. Do we have 27 in your group? Okay, all right. Please give this, this group five minutes.
Okay. My name's Gina Petrie, and I'm speaking as the co-chair of Seattle Silence Breakers and organizer for Radical Women. And I want to address the mayor's proposal for creating the Office of Employee Ombud. Silence Breakers, we're very glad to see that Mayor Durk can finally listen to our demand about this need. After reading the specifics of the mayor's proposal, however, this is not what we called for. In April, Silence Breakers sent a letter to the mayor clearly laying out what we wanted in an ombud position. The ombud should have real power to investigate and enact resolutions to sexual and racial harassment and all forms of discrimination, claims, cases, and grievances. It should be a temporary position until the Office for Civil Rights is made independent. Silence Breakers want to be part of the hiring of this position and not have it left to the mayor to appoint. We want accountability. We urge for funds for more investigators for the ombud and the Office for Civil Rights, not a deputy director, as is proposed for the Office for Civil Rights. City workers who are being harassed, discriminated against, bullied, assaulted, need this now. I urge you to listen to the demands of the Silence Breakers and take concrete action to stop sexual and racial harassment and all forms of discrimination at the city. The time is up. The time is up. And I want to say, on a personal note, that I don't believe that any of these services and these programs should be pitted against each other in a budget time or ever. There's enough money in this city if we do something simple like tax the rich. Thank you.
My name's Lisa. I'm a City Light employee and also a member of the Seattle Silence Breakers. And I just want to provide a couple comments on the mayor's executive order on anti-harassment and anti-discrimination. The first one is specifically regarding training. I request that my union, P T E 17, the Silence Breakers, and the I D T members have input on the development of the training plan for the plan is finalized, including the content, delivery methods, and implementation. My next comment is on accountability in the executive order. And again, I request that my union, P T E 17, the Seattle Silence Breakers, have the opportunity to review and provide feedback on the draft of the annual work plan before it's finalized.
My name is Doreen McGrath, a retired city employee, member of Silence Breakers. I'm responding to the mayor's proposal to centralize all employee misconduct investigations in the Seattle Department of Human Resources. While centralizing investigations does provide consistency from the different city departments performing their own investigations or not performing them at all, having the Human Resources Department conduct investigations is still a case of the fox guarding the chicken coop. City workers do not trust central H R either. The investigation unit should be in the ombud office initially, and then, when the Office of Civil Rights is independent, move it there. In addition, last February, Silence Breakers asked the mayors for statistics concerning racial and sexual harassment and all forms of discrimination complaints, and nothing has been released. The employees and the public have a right to know. From my own opinion, from my message personally to the council is, you need to tax Amazon and all the wealthy corporations in this city. Stop all the regressive taxes. You're pricing the workers and the poor out, as people have said, and you need to grow a spine and stand up to Jeff Bezos.
I'm Alice Lockridge. I also am a member of the Seattle Silence Breakers and a former Seattle City Light employee. October is the season of Halloween, and I left some Halloween treats for you at the front desk here. And for the person that's handing them to you, I have one, too.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
As a member of Seattle Silence Breakers, we ask for no more tricks. The employees of the city would like a treat. No more tolerating discrimination. To reduce wasteful spending on money paid out for court settlements and convictions against management's gender and sexual harassment and discrimination in hiring and training and opportunities for promotion and overtime practices, we propose you dedicate funds for hiring more women in high-paying, stable, skilled trades apprenticeships in all departments. The first opportunity will be this December for the Seattle City Lights pre-apprenticeship hire. I propose that that class will be all female.
Thank you very much. 27 is Erin, and 28, 29, 30, I don't have names. I've just got S O S over there. So, can you tell me who is going to be speaking? 27, Erin?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Erin Heick, and I'm here representing S E I U 925. We have about 17,000 members of our union across the state working all fields of education. We represent in the city hundreds of childcare professionals, and we fully support councilmember Mosqueta's request to examine the barriers to expanding that universe and getting more good care in our city. We have great, high-quality care in the city right now, but the infrastructure and the workforce development has not kept pace with the quality. For the fifth year in a row, Washington has, is in the top 10 states for the most expensive care in the nation. When people come to us, we have to tell them that they need to go find waiting lists and get on three, four, or five different waiting lists when they start considering having children. And that's just not feasible for most people. U Dub recently opened a center in 2016 for 140 slots. They had an 800% waiting list before the place even opened. And we know that this impacts working families. They are late to work. They have to, you know, they have to miss work because they, you know, their childcare arrangements fall through, and that has just cascading impacts. And on the worker side, this is a largely female workforce, and they're making $23,000 to $30,000 a year. And you cannot survive in the city of Seattle, or really in King County, on that kind of wage. So, we shouldn't be surprised when these really talented providers leave and go to Starbucks because they can get better wages and benefits. So, if we want that high-quality care for our kids, we actually have to pay for it. So, we really support councilmember Mosqueta's efforts to study this problem, figure out what the drivers are, and start addressing it. It's clearly a really tangled-up problem that's going to take a lot of work to solve, and we're excited to be part of that. Thanks.
Good. Thank you, Erin. 28?
Hi. I'm with Speak Out Seattle. We're a group. This is the Committee on Homelessness.
Okay. Great. So, I'd like just to get this real clear.
Yes.
There's 28, 29, and 30, so all of you are going to be speaking together?
We are three separate groups, three separate committees.
Okay. So, here's the problem. It's now 7:30. We are on number 27 out of 140. So, I'm going to ask you to be and bear with us as one group. Take five minutes. Be as articulate as you can. You got our full attention.
My name is Jen Oxley. I've lived in the city of Seattle for more than 20 years now. And over the course of those years, I've done a fair amount of volunteering, often in small homeless shelters. I've met amazingly kind, giving, loving folks in those shelters, guests, and fellow volunteers, and I'm very, very grateful to be involved in those communities. They're fabulous. But council, underlying this are tragic physical conditions on our streets that are going to lead to a public health crisis. You have the report from King County Public Health warning us all of this. Other cities on the West Coast have already experienced disease outbreaks amongst the homeless, and we've already seen a rise in H I V in North Seattle near where I live. This summer, I saw a man downtown pass out on a picnic table in Westlake Park, his pants badly stained by his own bowel movement. We all know about the human poo on the streets and the needles in the rats, creating dangerous conditions for every person living in this city. We cannot continue to let our most vulnerable people live in the unhealthy squalor that our many, many unsanctioned encampments are bringing to our streets and parks. We must address this now before it becomes an even worse crisis. This is why I back the large-scale FEMA-style tents, which are relatively inexpensive, easy to deploy, and could be a place to shelter people this very winter. With social services on site, these would double as enhanced shelters, which we are all fans of, and help to quickly triage folks into more stable, permanent housing situations that fit their individual needs. We simply cannot let another winter go by and not address this ongoing state of emergency. We need to act now before we lose any more lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Deborah, and I've lived in Seattle for 16 years. I'm here to ask that you act with real urgency to move people off the streets. It'll be three years next month since the city declared a state of emergency on homelessness, and the number of people living and dying on the streets has steadily increased since then. Tent and shed encampments and RV lots are not housing, and there are not evidence-based approaches. In May, the U S Interagency on Homelessness issued a strongly worded caution against both of these approaches, emphasizing that they are not effective in reducing homelessness, are difficult to maintain and manage, and suck up time and resources. Please stop investing in unproven approaches, and please stop funding share. The Seattle Times recently brought to light what those of us who have been paying attention of no one for years, that share's mission is not to move people into housing, but to keep them living indefinitely in encampments.
Please hold that. We're not going there. Please, go ahead.
That is not humane, and it is not a responsible use of public funding. It's unconscionable that you have continued to fund a homeless organization whose mission is not to get people out of homelessness. Please fund more 24/7 shelters with supportive services, but please do not fund share. If you're serious about reducing homelessness, you must fund only the organizations that are focused on getting people off the streets and into housing. Stop funding approaches that are driven by ideology and special interests. Exercise both compassion and fiscal responsibility, and invest only in what is proven to work. Fund outcomes, not advocates. Thank you.
Fund share wheel.
Fund share wheel.
Let's not, please. Look, please, go ahead.
I have number 30. My name is Bill Caldwell. I'm a resident of Seattle from the Leshi neighborhood. I have worked as a social worker in Seattle for over 23 years. I am also an active member of Speak Out Seattle. Our group is here speaking on behalf of many thousands of Seattle citizens who strongly oppose spending public funds for proposed drug consumption sites in our city. Access to treatment is what is needed to save lives. We ask our city council to transfer the 1.3 million currently earmarked as seed money to start a drug consumption site instead to programs that will provide treatment. Expanded access to treatment is urgently needed to save lives in Seattle today, especially treatment that is flexible, low barrier, and accessible immediately when requested. The currently earmarked 1.3 million would go a long way in supporting urgently needed programs endorsed by the Seattle and King County Public Health, such as buprenorphine pathways, the community psychiatric clinic's new low-barrier access program, and other medication-assisted treatment options, such as now being run by the Seattle Indian Health Board. Drug consumption sites are ineffective at stopping deaths from fentanyl-related overdoses. Fentanyl-laced drugs are flooding into our city, causing increased rates of death from overdose. There were 379 overdose deaths in our city and county last year, and that number is predicted to rise again this year. Drug consumption sites are also ineffective at getting people into treatment. Drug consumption sites have been shown to have a very destructive impact on neighborhoods in which they are placed. Drug consumption sites are a very poor use of limited tax dollars. We ask that you use our public dollars wisely. Do not use valuable resources to enable continued drug use by opening drug consumption sites. Please fund treatment instead. That will save lives.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming. I am very respectful of the fact that you've been here for so long. Okay.
Fund safe consumption. Fund safe consumption.
Hey, we don't need that. We really don't. Number 31, Community Passageways. And then, Judge McKenna has already spoken, so I assume that if he's still here, he's not speaking again. Shannon Morrison. So, it's 31, 33, and then, 34. Is it Lavanya? Are you 31?
33.
I'm 31.
Who's 31? Okay. Community Passageways, and I'm sorry, I don't have your name on the sheet.
Hi. I'm Dominique. I'm a group.
Okay.
But I'm Dominique Davis, founder and CEO of Community Passageways. Also here as a representation of Budget for Justice. Our coalition was put together to keep people out of the criminal justice system. Our main goal is to put resources out, pull resources out of the system and put them into community-based organizations. Community-based organizations is already out here doing the work. That's already out here making a difference. That has been working with the community, building relationships with the community, and giving the community a lot of opportunities for employment, jobs, and housing. Right? So, we know that, we have put our proposals in, and we know that there's a lot of pushback from systems. And our systems want to keep doing the same thing that it's always been doing for years. It does not work for us, and it does not work for our community. Black and brown people, communities have been decimated by the system. So, I don't see how we can keep operating the same way and expect different results. I can't see how we can sit up here and say the system is helping people in their lives any way whatsoever, especially black and brown communities that have actually been victims of the criminal justice system. Now, we're sitting here having debates about whether probation works in our community or not. It might work in some communities, but I have never seen it work in our community, and it doesn't work for us at all. When we're out here getting people jobs, getting them, getting them back in school and back in their education, getting them their apartments, getting them stabilized, and then, all of a sudden, they get a probation violation and have to go sit in jail and come back out to no job and no apartment. And now, all of a sudden, we've just added to the housing problem, and we've added to the unemployment problem. Right? So, at the end of the day, I think resources need to be diverted into something different, something more constructive. The resources in our community need to match the issues in our community. Right? If you put more resources in our community, we can address our issues that we deal with. More resources to deal with the issues is the answer. I don't feel like we should keep doing the same thing over and over again and expect different results. We know that's insanity. Now, either we're insane, or we're going to do something new. And it's trying to do something different and trying to do something new. Our people in our community need to be funded and need to be supported. So, at the end of the day, we have been doing the work. A bunch of organizations that were connected with the community have been doing the work. Our stats and our numbers and our data show that we make a difference. We build relationships. Systems do not build relationships. Period. Systems are punitive. We can't keep having a punitive lens and talk about restorative justice, because restorative justice does not work with a punitive lens. Restorative justice only works with a healing lens. So, we need to start shifting the way we think. And I know it's hard, because we start talking about public safety. But public safety, at the end of the day, is getting people jobs, getting people in education, and getting people housing. That's public safety. Not putting them on probation, not locking them up, not pushing them through the court system, because that has not worked. We all know the data. It does not work. So, now, I'm standing here saying, put some more money into the community, into community-based organizations. Let us keep doing this work and put this work to another level where we're really making a dent in the criminal justice system, and where our people are not sitting in jail or sitting on probation, but they're actually moving forward in their life and making a difference in their life.
Thank you.
All right. (APPLAUSE).
My name is Pete Petz. I'm a community ambassador and also a C P coach with Community Passageways, and I've been working with Dominique ever since it started. I'm working with kids in Echo Glen, Green Hill, R J C, Alder, Third, working with kids everywhere, doing what I do. I got 52 retail theft arrests in my background, five Illinois state prison stays, two parole violations, and about 16 probation violations. The last time I checked, there was nothing good that came out of probation, because I lived it. And the most amazing part about it, I'm just a, I'm just a little kid from Chicago with a bullet in his head, that been in five drug raids, 33 years crack addict, and now, I'm working with the greatest organization in the country, along with Budget for Justice and all these other organizations that we're working with. But my story and my life of what I went through is the reason why we have all these superstars that's standing behind me. Kids that we've gotten out of dope houses. The average time that it takes for an average adult that's coming out of the prison system to rehabilitate is two to five years. These kids, we only been working with for a year, probably a year and a half, and they starting their own businesses. We got pilots. We got people that got barber schools and barber shops and all kinds of stuff. And I think we deserve to get these kids a standing ovation. Everybody wants to get them a standing ovation. (APPLAUSE).
Thank you.
We deserve ourselves.
Thank you.
And our data shows. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you very much coming.
Have a good one.
Okay. 33? So, Shannon?
Yes.
Before you start speaking, 34 is Lavanya, 35 Frank, 36 looks like Jory.
Yeah. I want to ask that you give me five minutes, because I have a group of people here with me.
And you, Shannon, you are speaking on?
Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Okay. Can you introduce your group, please?
My group is with me is Mother Nation.
Okay.
My name is Shannon Morrison. I'm employee of City of Seattle. Most importantly, I'm affinity group member, the City of Seattle Native Employees, known as Canoes. But first and foremost, I want to thank the Duwamish people, the Coast Salish people, for allowing us this space here to speak tonight. for allowing us this space here to speak tonight. So I'm here to support Councilmember Shama Sawant's budget amendment calling for full funding for Indigenous Peoples' Day. I have been the lead organizer for Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration every year since our community organized and worked with Councilmember Sawant to win it in 2014. Every year, the Indigenous Peoples' Day Planning Committee has been forced to spend most of its time going from city department to city department, asking for money. And every year, we are told there is no money. And then at last minute, money comes together. Because if you know the Native community, we're going to do our event with or without money. But we ask that we don't, we ask that this money comes forward so that we don't spend all our time looking for money that is already there in the budget. And we don't ask for much. So as a City of Seattle employee, I also attend race and social justice summits every year, and we have a common theme every year, that we want to dismantle race and social justice issues that I feel are atrocities, and John T. Williams was one of them. That's what strengthens Canoes, is the shooting of John T. Williams on August 30th. This is unacceptable, and we are tired of it. The Indigenous Peoples' Day Planning Committee should be able to focus its time spreading the word to community members, building up community members about how we fought and won Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I've been fighting it since my birth, since, the Duwamish people have been fighting it for 500 years. We especially need more affordable housing and homeless shelters and services, because we all know so much of the Native community has been gentrified out of the city because there's no affordable housing, and we are disproportionately homeless as well. We are tired of getting the runaround from the city. Right now, it's just me speaking to you, councilmembers, Bruce Harrell, Shama, to all of you. I ask all of you, Lisa, Lorena, Sally, Peter?
Mike.
Mike, sorry, sorry. Forgive me.
I do a lot of things. I'm late for dinner.
Rob.
Whatever.
I ask all of you guys to support Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's a race and social justice effort that speaks to not only the employees, but our community members, and we all have a common theme out here, to support Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Norrieen Hill. I'm the executive director, founder of Mother Nation. We sent in a proposal budget to City Council. We work with Native American women, single moms, single dads. We provide culturally informed healing services for our homeless community. We have speakers here today. Our time has been cut back, so I'm going to let them say just a few words, so you can see who our community is that we represent.
I'm Sarah, and I'm an alcoholic and drug addict recovery for 16 years. I've been in and out of jail and prison, and I'm homeless. And I found out about Mother Nation, and it's been really helping me a lot spiritually and helping me with my recovery. I really appreciate the Mother Nation's program. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Arlene Zani, and I just want to say on behalf of Mother Nation, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Mother Nation. I was formerly homeless for about 10 years on the streets of Seattle. If somebody had told me five years ago I'd be standing in front of you, asking for help to keep our funding going for our cultural services, I probably, I wouldn't believe them. But I am here asking you, because I believe that's a very important part of our community, to keep a Native organization going, to help us women that are in recovery. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you all for coming. Are you 34?
Yes.
Good. Do you pronounce it Lavanya?
Lavanya.
Lavanya, okay, thank you very much. And you are a group?
No, I'm an individual.
Okay, great, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Lavanya Madhu-Sudan. I'm a member of the Young Leaders Committee through GOT Green. I'd like to share a bit of my personal story, but I'm here to speak in support of the budget request to support the Green Pathways Fellowship Program. As a person of color, as a first-generation immigrant, my parents faced a lot of challenges in immigrating to this country and in maintaining successful employment. Despite being highly educated and skilled professionals from India, their credentials were not recognized here. Language and cultural differences, implicit bias, structural racism, all of these barriers really accumulated and prevented them from having as much success in their careers as they would have otherwise. Additionally, restrictive immigration policies prevented my mother from being able to work for many years. And in the case of my father, he wasn't able to change his job because he was stuck with an exploitative employer, depending on him for visa sponsorship. So because of these challenges, my parents faced a lot of difficulty in accumulating wealth. And I'm very fortunate that I was able to rely on student loans to finance my higher education. And seeing the challenges that my parents faced, I wanted to make sure that I'd have a way to address these issues. And in volunteering with GOT Green, it's really been an amazing experience, and this Green Pathways program can really make a difference for people of color, young people of color in this city. We're requesting $150,000 from the city's budget to support this program, and it's based on a very successful model through Rainier Valley Corps, as you heard earlier this evening. So thank you for the councilmembers who have championed and supported this budget request. We're very grateful to you, and we hope that you can drag this home. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Frank? Are you 35?
I'm a group.
Okay. So after Frank, we've got Jory Waits, 36, and it looks like John Perkins, 37. And what are you speaking on?
My name is Frank Miranda. I'm here tonight on behalf of Solid Ground and supported by the Seattle Food Committee and Association of 27 food banks that operate in the City of Seattle. These bodies support the full SHSC budget recommendation portfolio, including the minimum 3.5% annual inflationary adjustment for human services funding in 2019 and 2020. First, I want to thank you for the past and current support of the work of both the Seattle Food Committee and Solid Ground. I come before you today to seek support for a recommendation included in SHSC's portfolio to increase capacity for food delivery to local food banks. As you know, Seattle's food banks are a vital service for thousands of food insecure families and individuals across the city, from the U District to Ballard, to West Seattle, to Rainier Valley. Food banks fill the gap where income, location, or other factors can create hardship. 20 of these sites are currently linked to major food donors. Those sites receive regular food delivery in amounts that provide a basic food source that allows them to focus on serving complete nutrition to the communities that they serve. The current links are incomplete and have few resources for equal service provision. There are actions we can take to strengthen our communities, though. The recommendation to increase capacity for food delivery to local food banks is one such action. This recommendation will allow more agencies to leverage economies of scale to receive basic food services. In turn, those agencies will be able to focus on increasing the amount of nutritionally-dense foods available to the communities they serve, as well as the need to tailor their services to the unique needs of those communities. For these reasons, Solid Ground and the Seattle Food Committee urge you to fully fund SHSC's budget recommendations, including its recommendation to increase capacity for food delivery to local food banks. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Marcy Bowers. I'm also here with Solid Ground and the Statewide Poverty Action Network. As you know, Solid Ground provides services for more than 76,000 area residents, but we also advocate at the state level for changes to policies and systems that create and maintain poverty. I'm here tonight to urge the council to restore funding for the city's Office of Intergovernmental Relations organizational advocacy contract. The mayor's budget completely eliminates our $85,000 contract with Poverty Action and Solid Ground. We believe that advocacy is a key strategy to addressing systemic poverty and homelessness in Seattle and the region. This modest investment from the city brings a significant return, especially for our city's low-income people and people of color. Every dollar from the state can be leveraged by the city to address our current homelessness crisis. And our advocacy puts direct cash assistance in the pockets of city residents, helping them, put them on a path to stability, and limiting the need for city-funded resources. Finally, contracting with a statewide organization is a strategic move for the city. Poverty and homelessness do not stop at our city's borders. Being able to indirectly represent the city in meetings with statewide legislators and coalitions bolsters your ability as the city to be a regional leader and partner with the state and other cities and addressing, other cities and counties in addressing our crisis. I will spare you all the details of the successes we've had in the last year, but they've been substantial and brought direct resources to the City of Seattle's residents, particularly our most vulnerable, and putting cash in their pockets, reducing their debts, and giving people a chance to re-enter their communities. I urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. And Gordon McHenry, welcome.
Good evening, or maybe good night. I'm Gordon McHenry, president and CEO of Solid Ground, and I'm here also in support of the Seattle Human Services Coalition Justice Budget. I want to stress to you the importance of increasing funding for prevention services and their critical role to addressing housing instability and solving homelessness in the City of Seattle. The greatest predictor of remaining stably housed is not to lose your housing in the first place. We are making progress as a community in housing more people, and we are not keeping pace with the number of people who are slipping from homelessness, housing instability into homelessness. We partner with the city and the county, but the city tonight on efficient homeless prevention services. Two examples, in 2017, we provided financial assistance to keep 1,472 people from losing their homes. During that period, HMIS said that only 3.6% of those became homeless after receiving their services. Average cost was only $1,680 per the families and homes that we served. That money has been decreasing. We encourage you to increase the money that the city provides for homeless prevention. We get phone calls up to over 100 a week asking for financial assistance to prevent eviction. With our private funding, we can only support about five of those households per week. We also urge the city to continue the Seattle Rental Housing Assistance Pilot Program, which is just underway. It's taken a long time working with SHA to get those folks their vouchers, and we're working with them to keep them from slipping into homeless while they're awaiting their voucher. I have more testimony, I'll leave it with you. Thank you for your service, thank you for your attention to our support.
Thank you, Solid Ground. Gordon, thank you, Marcy, thank you for being here. Jody Waits in Youth Care, nice to see you.
Good to see all of you. We're just getting everybody up and organized. We are a group, so good evening. My name is Jody Waits, and I'm a five-year officer at Youth Care. It's good to be back at City Hall, and nice to see everybody. We are here in full support of the SHSC budget portfolio. We too have two incredible young people who will share some words about the importance of employment training here in a moment, but I'll hold on those superstars for two seconds for two quick updates. And one, we want to thank councilmembers Mosketa and O'Brien for their leadership in addressing wage disparity you've heard tonight, and we can only add to the chorus that a commitment to ending homelessness and service to other people should not cost you your stability in this town. We strongly encourage that you support Councilmember Mosketa's 3.5% inflation adjustment. Second, we want to express our deep and significant gratitude for your support of the very likely soon-to-exist Employment and Education-focused Opportunity Center at the corner of Broadway and Pine. It is certainly a once-in-a-movement, a once-in-a-lifetime moment for the youth homelessness movement, to be able to have this type of innovation, hope, and expansion of services. The current allocation in the mayor's budget includes CBG funds, that's a test. And ultimately, the requirements tied to this funding will significantly delay our timeline and potentially add millions of dollars of renovation fees. We urge you to please consider ways to not only keep this resource, but respectfully consider removing ties to CDBG. With that, I will add my thanks and note that the incredible young people you'll hear from, Dee and Will, have both had a long day at school, will be back up in the game again tomorrow in our Youth Build program, and have respectfully waited over two and a half hours to share their words. I will also note that Dee, who you'll be hearing from first, deserves a round of applause for completing all successful of his GED tests today. Nice.
Hello, my name is Dee. I'm here to talk about the importance of employment training programs. Employment training programs are important because the system is built for minorities like me to fail. These types of programs give minorities a fair second chance to rebuild their ways into society and become a successful tax-paying citizen. I grew up in a home full of commotion. We didn't have the necessary rules, resources, and tools as the rest of my peers. For example, transportation, food, and safety were not things I could always rely on. My peers had a shoulder they could lean on and the ingredients to successfully navigate through life. I feel like I had a broken GPS. Being an employment training program has given my exposure that my peers took for granted. In high school, if you failed once, you were done. With this program, when you mess up, it's not necessarily over, because people who fund the program want to see change and give minorities a fair opportunity. The staff reach out and give you a hand instead of in high school, where teachers had so many students that they couldn't help each other succeed. The staff teaches the basic life fundamentals of how to accept criticism, accept failure, and get up and go harder despite the challenges. In employment training programs like ones at Youth Care and New Horizon, you get individual one-on-one care. You can evaluate your life struggles to take things day by day so that we can become successful with ourselves and our peers. I feel like these training programs are important because they teach us leadership and change our lives. I urge you to fund youth employment training programs, and thank you for your time. Hi, Mom.
My name is William. I'm here tonight on behalf of myself, and I'm here to talk to you about the importance of youth employment training programs. Employment training is important because the youth of this city would be provided the opportunity to benefit their future. These programs help individuals because they give them the necessary skills to provide for themselves and their families. If you build these skills now in young people, you make an investment so that they do not have to rely on the government later on. These programs also benefit the community. The more money people have to spend, the better off the community will be, because there will be more money for taxes as well as economic growth. I'm currently in an employment training program. It has given me the chance to get a head start in a competitive industry and become an apprentice in a well-paying trade. For these reasons, I urge you to fund employment training programs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Youth Care. John Perkins is 37, is he still here? I know that he was here earlier with a group. No, John Perkins? Okay. Patricia Sully, you're 38, Tracy Gillespie, 39, and Kirsten Harris-Talley is 40, but I understand that she's left.
And we're actually going to be a group.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Glenna Martin. I am a board-certified family medicine physician licensed to practice in Washington State. In addition to my family medicine training, I completed a fellowship year in addiction medicine. I stand here with other healthcare workers in support of supervised consumption spaces. As a doctor, I've taken an oath, I've entered into a social contract to do no harm. To me, this means advocating for my patients who use drugs, but perhaps more importantly, advocating for people who will never be my patients, because there are too many barriers in place to reach me. For people who are scared of judgment, people who have been traumatized by health care, for people who aren't ready to be patients yet, I want to welcome these folks to see me, to seek treatment, but this isn't enough. A supervised consumption space does so much more than its name can convey. It reduces bloodborne disease transmission like HIV or hepatitis C. An SCS can also reduce bacterial infection by providing clean injection equipment, cleaning wounds, and identifying serious infections early. I've seen patients need new heart valves or have amputations as a consequence of these infections. They can be devastating. Staff in an SCS can intervene in case of overdose, something well-advertised but worth repeating, given the increase in fentanyl not only in the heroin supply, but increasingly in other drugs as well, emphasizing the importance of having someone there to help. But for me, the value of supervised consumption space transcends the debate over economic, or crime, or other statistics, because a facility like this offers people who use drugs a nonjudgmental place that accepts them for who they are. I have met people using drugs who can't imagine going into a clinic or healthcare facility and facing judgment. I know the judgment they are worried about, because I've seen it and heard it myself. The healthcare system is often not a friendly place for people who inject drugs, but a supervised consumption space would offer a place which does not stigmatize them for their drug use, and which accepts that they are people first and foremost. Putting all our resources into treatment isn't enough. A supervised consumption space would help me do my job. Please provide full funding for an SCS to open and operate in 2019. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Deutsch, and I'm a Seattle resident, and I support SES. It's really disappointing to me that the city hasn't yet implemented an SCS when we know it will save lives, and while we have spent the last two years worrying about whether there's sufficient evidence, people continue to die, and the mayor continues to invest in strategies we know don't work. We all agree we need a multi-pronged strategy to address public drug use in our community. No one is saying that this is the only thing we should do, but it is one thing we must do, because the reality is that people who are dead can't get treatment, and we all have to live with that on our consciences.
Hi, my name is Patricia Sully, and I'm the Policy and Legal Services Director at the Public Defender Association. Neil deGrasse Tyson once said that "The great thing about science is that it's true, whether you like it or not." So let's talk about what the science actually says. What the science actually says is that safe consumption spaces save lives. What the evidence shows us is that it prevents- What the evidence shows us is that it prevents transmission of disease. We know that fentanyl is a huge threat, and we know that fentanyl does not have to be deadly, in a safe consumption space, a fentanyl-based overdose can be reversed. In a safe consumption space, people can make the connections that can transform their lives, that can help them build bridges to other services, to greater and greater quality of life. What the evidence shows us again and again is that safe consumption spaces do not harm the neighborhoods they're in, but rather improve the quality of life for all neighbors in those neighborhoods. We know that these sites work, they work all over the world, they work so well in Canada, that they've moved from having a single site to having dozens upon dozens of sites all over the nation, and yet here in the United States, we're still fighting to even get one. Seattle is poised to be the first one, and we can do that. You all have helped so much to make that happen, and we're asking that you help again and carry us over the finish line. Overdose deaths are preventable, and we can prevent them. We hope that you will fully fund and implement safe consumption spaces in 2019. Thank you.
Do you have your 39 card?
I do.
Good, thank you. I knew you wanted to take that home. Okay, Tracy, are you a group?
Yes, I am a group.
All right, would you introduce your friends and tell us what you're...
Yes, yes.
Are you talking about Lead?
Good evening, my name is Tracy Gillespie, and I am with the Lead program, the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion program. Thank you, first of all, for those of you who have taken the time to meet with me individually to hear updates. I know you all are very busy this season, but I appreciate the time. Secondly, thank you so much for your ongoing support, really your support of a program that is based within human dignity. So I'm briefly just going to share some recent updates, I know you've heard from me at the last hearing, but just two weeks ago, one of our sergeants, who was integral and very active within the West Precinct when Lead first rolled out, has relocated to the Southwest Precinct. And we recently received an email from him saying that he came across a participant, an individual, that would have been a perfect Lead participant, and yet because Lead is not currently active in the South Precinct or Southwest Precinct, that individual was arrested and booked, because that officer had no other ability, no other program to be able to divert that person to. These are the types of stories that we really want you to consider when you're thinking about our additional million dollars in this budget. Additionally, the Highland Park Action Committee has been asking for Lead expansion for well over a year, and this is a committee who, despite is being faced...
Three years, we're being corrected.
Oh, several years, excuse me. And despite the community safety concerns and all of the issues that that community is facing, that committee is not asking for, to just jail these people and to, you know, to be using traditional criminal justice methods. They're asking for the Lead program because they know it works and they know it's based in human dignity. So please consider us very, very, very enthusiastically when you're making these really tough decisions.
Great.
Hello, my name is Tim Candela, I'm with the Public Defender Association, I am a Lead Project Manager for the West Precinct. So we have many success stories that we want to share, but I want to share one that impacts businesses and communities, specifically in the waterfront area. We recently received a letter from Executive Director of Friends at the Waterfront, Heidi Hughes, and I wanted to share some of that information with you. With the help of PDA, we brought Lead to the waterfront in 2016 with an intentional big focus push. At that time, the property owners, neighbors, and businesses were quite jaded about perceived lack of responsiveness by the city and feeling helpless about the level of street disorder and suffering on the street. Because of that big Lead push in the beginning, everyone saw immediate positive results and the efficacy of having Lead as a tool for officers. In the first eight months, we had 31 referrals, and we celebrated at the end of the year with a reception hosted by Friends at the Waterfront, along with property owners, to acknowledge the amazing work of law enforcement and the outreach workers on the waterfront. A young man who had been at the waterfront as a Lead referral shared his story about getting on his feet, which was very inspiring. As a result of that big push and the results that followed, the community has embraced Lead and became active participants. Today, the positive collaboration with the community in Lead continues, and we have seen a 30% reduction in arrests and citations on the waterfront through regular Lead presence, along with an uptick in attendance at our free community programming on the waterfront during the summer. The increased perception of public safety brings more people out to enjoy the waterfront. The responsiveness of the Lead team has made a huge difference in how the community engages. We enjoy a very productive partnership, and one of our regular public safety coordination meetings with property owners and waterfront stakeholders just yesterday, we all agreed that the responsiveness and results with the Lead in place has made a huge difference. This is because of the focus pushed at the start and the intention and continued time over, and I want to emphasize that we continue to partner with the waterfront, and we're chomping at the bit to partner with other businesses and other communities, because when Lead is fully funded, it just doesn't provide healing for the participants, it provides healing for the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Katrina Johnson, I'm a Lead Project Manager with PDA, and I just want to emphasize that it is imperative that we expand Lead to South and Southwest Seattle, so that those communities don't continue to be marginalized, because they are not getting what is being offered in other parts of the city. They matter too, those officers need the tools in South Seattle, so that they can make other choices as opposed to just arresting people. So I urge you to please give us the money, so that we can expand to South Seattle. Thank you.
All right, number 40, I understand our friend Kirsten Harris-Talley has left, but Katie Hurley, there is a group that is...are you all there? Where's Katie?
I'm Katie Hurley.
Okay, thank you. Please, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Anita Candela, and I work at the King County Department of Public Defense.
And my name's Katie Hurley, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Department of Public Defense today. We are here, first of all, we want to say that we do not agree with the characterization of probation that was made earlier, but we are here now to talk about what we know works. Budget for Justice is a coalition of dedicated community partners. They help individuals, families, and communities thrive. They do this incredible work by providing meaningful services, supports, and mentorship. And if a person is charged with a crime, these partners provide comprehensive help during the legal case and far beyond it. I have seen our community partners reach incredible results. Ambassadors from Community Passageways changed the life of one of my clients. They provided him and his family with safe and supportive housing, counseling, and mentorship, resources which endured far beyond his legal case. Our community partners are struggling for funding and operating on a shoestring budget. They're not able to serve the vast majority of those in need. They need support and investment from the City of Seattle, because it is through partnerships with community that we find our strength and support. Unlike the limited budget that community partners are provided, Seattle's department receives $5.6 million a year to monitor individuals who are convicted of misdemeanors. The probation department itself does not provide services, and even if it did, would not serve clients after their cases are resolved. Monitoring people struggling, because they don't have access to resources to succeed, is not something we can afford fiscally or in human terms. There is no evidence showing that probation monitoring makes us any safer. An investment from the City of Seattle would allow our partners to expand their critical work. That investment will pay long-term dividends. We know that the status quo is failing us all, and predominantly, communities of color. We are asking the Seattle City Council to act and move us down the path of criminal legal system reform, by recognizing that the foundational supports provided by communities are the keys to community safety and success. There is a more just path forward, and we are asking the Seattle City Council to embrace it. Thank you.
We also want to say that we support the SHSC budget proposal, and we recognize that you need to increase the scale of Seattle's investments and solutions up to the scale of the challenges our communities are facing. You have the resources and the power to do it.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to read the next group. 41 is Eric Nagy, and 42 Jude Ewing, 43 Dominic Davis, 44 Jennifer Gosar. 41, 42, 43, and 44. One more time, 41 Eric. I can't see your number. Okay, is Eric here? Jude, why don't you proceed? I'm not seeing 41.
Okay, I'm going to let Skip speak first, because I'm ADHD, it's hard to control myself.
Skip, have you signed up?
Skip Knox, 42.
What's your number, Skip?
I'm sorry?
42, he's 42.
Okay, so is he going to speak and you're not, is that what's happening?
No, I will, but...
Okay, two minutes, let's go.
He's got his damn tab.
Okay.
Councilmember, with all due respect, people have been sitting, including yourselves, for a long time, might a minute to stand up and shake yourselves out be a good idea?
Thank you, we're good.
Okay, I am proud of your endurance. Good evening, I'm Skip Knox, I've been a resident of Lake City since 1966 and a homeowner. And I winced 50 years ago when they built the subsidized housing at 30th and 145th, saying to myself, "Well, there goes the neighborhood," and I was right. And all these years later, I've come 180, everybody has to be somewhere, and we are all our brothers and sisters keepers. So, if you're curious what it's like to live as a homeless person, let your hair grow for a couple of months, don't shave, get a ratty old jacket, and go meet with them, and sit with them, and eat with them, and talk with them. And it's amazing what you'll find in the way that they respond to you, as opposed to your fellow homeowners. I've had that wonderful experience, that educational thing, and it's agony. I'm here to advocate for a great little project we have in Lake City called God's Little Acre. It's a place, a drop-in center, which gives people a life jacket while drowning in the rain at night. You can go and get a clean, use a clean bathroom, take a shower, do your laundry, and get a bite to eat before you go out for another grinding day in the rain. Five days a week, that is, but people live seven days a week. God's Little Acre is asking for additional funding to expand their services to seven days a week.
I just want to make clear that Jude, if you want to speak, now's your time.
Oh, okay. I'm Jude Ewing, I live in Lake City House, which is a Seattle Housing Authority, but low-income building in Lake City, of course. I was actually born into a privilege, but we were not raised to understand diversity, racial equity, anything. I left at 17, I've lived in all those venues since then, and I have become an advocate for low-income homeless and disabilities, seniors, everybody.
Okay, I'm really sorry, but I'm going to have to...
I'm involved with Lake City Community Center.
Good.
We really, really need the $5 million that we've been talking about, because it expands on everything that we're trying to encompass, racial equity and so forth.
Okay, Jude, thank you very much. I had to just give you two minutes, I'm trying to be fair to everybody, thank you, and you have a great advocate in your councilmember, Deborah Juarez, who's working hard for God's Little Acre, and also for your community center. So thank you both for coming. 43 is Dominic Davis, Jennifer Gosar is 44, and Steve Dashell is 45. Dominic?
Why don't you use the taller one, Betty? I think, because you can move that, and you can move it up. Yeah.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, okay. Yep, we represent Community Passageways, you know what I'm saying? Dominic Davis is our CEO, and we're here to talk about just probation. Me personally, I'm a young man, black man, 22, I had five warrants to my name for a long time, about two, three years, and I lived in South Seattle most of my life. One of my mentors had mentioned earlier, then said that they pulled kids out of dope houses. I literally was one of those kids, 18 years old, dropped out of high school, like, just living in a dope, that's just what I thought life was going to be. And getting, having the stress of these five warrants and different probations and different things, I always didn't think that I could rise in life, or I didn't think that I could do anything, you know, positive, or be in these buildings downtown and things like that. And since I've found Community Passageways, they've not only helped me get those warrant squashed, but also become a way better man. And today, now and today, I'm in school studying technology, because you know this is a big tech hub city, so I'm blessed to have the opportunity to be in school, they hooked me up with an internship to go to a code academy. Coding bootcamps are very expensive, so to be able to have the opportunity to have a scholarship is very huge, so I'm extremely grateful for that. And I'm an independent web contractor, and this is all from just a year ago, me having five warrants, literally sleeping in a dope house, you know what I'm saying? So, yeah, that's all I want to say.
I'm here to personally testify, Community Passageways is a great program, for me and for everybody that you could see. They're just giving us a second chance. Last year, I had three felony court cases, should be a three-time felon right now, but thanks to Dom, got all my felonies dropped off my record, gave me a second chance and gave me an opportunity to really look at the world in a different way. Now I'm out here searching for knowledge. Before, I used to kind of hide from knowledge, and now I'm really out here searching for knowledge, thanks to Dominique and everybody in this program. I'm about to be 25% owner of a company, about to get my LLC, and these are words I never even knew, these are things I never even imagined in my life, but as soon as Dom stepped into my life and really gave me this knowledge, now I really just, I just look for knowledge, like, it's just, I don't know, and it's weird, and it's weird to really say that, I know, but, I don't know, something about Dom, he just turned something on in me that just woke me up, and I see that life is so much more, I got my own apartment now, and just... Come on, yeah! And you know, and it's all thanks to everybody in the program, and I'm just fully thankful, and I feel like it just needs to be funded more, and I'm just one story, and everybody got a story to complete.
Good job.
I had a lot of things grateful that Dom was able to achieve for me, but one of the main things was being able to have internship at the Porter Seattle with Lance Little, the director of the airport. Just being able to walk around the airport with someone who runs the airport and takes his time every day, and literally to enjoy what he does, and that opportunity, I don't think anybody could imagine being in those steps, but it was just very grateful. I've had a lot of opportunities that a lot of kids wouldn't have, and I don't have a criminal background history, I'm just a kid that didn't have enough knowledge in my head to push myself, and that's what Dom woke up, and I thank him for that, and I think you guys should get along with the movement of Community Passageways.
Hello, I'm the other Dominique, I'm Dominique Harris. I've been working with Dominic Davis and Community Passageways for about two years now. About a year into it, I got into some trouble on my own, just because I have a criminal history already. It made the situation worse, and my fear made me run, because I felt like I was just going to go to jail. So I'm on the run, doing my own thing, and I reached out to Dom, and he's like, "All right, well, we got to handle this," you know what I'm saying? Like, "We're not going to have you out here illegal, you know, because you already know how the police do when they find you, you know, it could be a bigger situation." So he went with me and we handled that, you know, my situation, and now, tomorrow, I'm going to go to court for the last time, and be completely off of paperwork, you know, off of everything. And I've been struggling for years, wanting to do better, but just having that leash attached to me, you know what I'm saying, not letting me progress, you know, and we got to break that, you know? So that's what we do here, Community Passageways.
Good for you.
Invest in diversion, not probation.
All right. Thank you all, thank you for coming. 44 is Jennifer, 45 Steve Dashell, 46 Michael Niemer, maybe? 44 here? I don't see 44, Steve Dashell, you're up.
All right.
Nice to see you.
Well, good evening, councilmembers, my name is Steve Dashell, I'm the Executive Director of Southwest Youth and Family Services and Co-Chair of the Seattle Human Services Coalition. SHSC members are here this evening, along with allies from communities across Seattle, to urge you to take decisive steps forward in this budget. Increase the scale of Seattle's investments in solutions up to the scale and challenges our communities are facing. Seattle's economy is roaring along for some, but... Seattle's economy is roaring along for some, but middle and lower-income Seattle residents aren't getting the benefits, in fact, they're losing ground. We have the resources and power to address this inequity. The mayor's proposed budget that fails to even maintain the level of community health and human services currently being provided. The mayor's budget would have you cut overnight shelter. The mayor also includes less than half the funding for inflation adjustments needed to maintain current levels of service. The mayor's proposal also cuts funding for grassroots advocacy to bring state resources to Seattle residents, and cuts an attorney working with sexual assault survivors, and ends a Seattle transgender economic empowerment program. Our top priority is to restore these cuts, but more than that, we urge you to take a decisive step forward now, as you create this budget. Restore the proposed cuts, and include the full portfolio of SHSC recommendations, including implementing the Budget for Justice. The members of SHSC, thank you for the leadership you've shown in the past for social justice. Invest in these next two years to move us closer to becoming the just and thriving community we know you want Seattle to be for all of our residents, not just the fortunate few. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right, forty-six is Michael. All right, I'm not seeing forty-six. Elizabeth James is forty-seven, and Jen, is it Musea, forty-eight? So, Michael, I'm forty-six, I'm checking you off, Elizabeth James and Jen, and then fifty is Natalie Hills.
Hi, thank you for staying around this late.
Thank you for being here.
I think you're gonna have a few more hours left. I'm here to ask you to ratify the Seattle Police Union Contract. Mayor Jenny Durkin is a U.S. District Attorney who helped negotiate that consent decree. I think she can read a contract, and I think she already did, and she says that it complies. If it doesn't, it can go before Judge Robard, and he can make a decision, and I'm pretty sure that contract has terms that can be, if one term is struck, the whole contract can, the other parts stay. So there's no reason not to sign this contract and work out any details that might not comply in the long term. The biggest reason for doing that is because we don't have enough police officers when someone calls 911 to respond in violent crimes. I've had it happen to myself, calling 911 and being told that I was assaulted and hiding in a bank vestibule, that no one could come for two hours. In four hours, they called me back and said that it was gonna be another two hours, because they had another violent crime going on with guns, and asked if I was still outside. That's what your police department does, is they're supposed to be responding to keep people safe. It's not the equitable things, they can't do that if they're short-staffed, and they have been, and they still are, and now they're threatening to leave even more if this isn't ratified. If the point is to get rid of your police department and wipe it out, you know, you're gonna vote to not ratify it, because that's probably what will happen, so I hope that you think and put public safety number-one priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Jen, forty-eight, and then Natalie Hills, fifty, and then Alicia Glenwell is fifty-one.
All right, good evening, I'm Jen Musea, I'm the executive director of the Ballard Food Bank, I'm also the co-chair of the City Budget Task Force with Seattle Human Services Coalition. As many have shared this evening, in terms of their stories, we all know that our city is facing a critical time, and we have to work together to address this and solve these issues, which is why I'm here to request your support of the full package of budget recommendations brought forth by the Seattle Human Services Coalition. It recommends no cuts and investments in critical programming in our city. Specifically, I recommend that you include an inflation adjustment of 3.5% for 2019 and 2020, anything less is a cut. In addition, I'm concerned about the fund swap between the sweet and beverage tax and the general fund. A swap would mean that ongoing funding for critical essential needs programs is being pitted against proposals to innovate and expand important programs. Please find the revenue and resources to fund the community advisory board's priorities without cutting spending in the programs that we are named in the swap. As so many have shared, there's a tremendous need, we see it all every day, and we have to invest, we can't cut, we need these services, we can't pit program against program or district against district, we have to take care of the issues citywide. I appreciate your leadership, all of you, and I know you can make this happen, so thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Natalie? Natalie Hills, then Alicia Glenwell, and then fifty-two is a mystery.
Good evening, my name is Natalie Hills, and I'm here tonight on behalf of LifeWire, a domestic violence agency based in East King County. I'm the resource manager, and one of my roles is managing LifeWire's 24-hour helpline. I want to start by saying we support the full Seattle Human Services Coalition's budget recommendation portfolio. We also know that any cuts to programs or services that support domestic violence and sexual assault survivors would be detrimental to our community. With support and collaboration with the Coalition, ending gender-based violence and new beginnings, I'd like to tell you about the key benefits of a proposed King County 24-hour coordinated domestic violence helpline. I started as a helpline volunteer six years ago, and now I manage LifeWire's helpline. I have spoken to many survivors and have experienced what it means for someone in crisis struggling to access basic needs and relevant DV services, and know the proposed change to a coordinated helpline would significantly benefit survivors. A King County coordinated helpline would not only streamline access to resources, but also increase ease of access and provide culturally competent DV services within all, within a consolidated and coordinated helpline service. Survivors would no longer have to call agency after agency to find confidential emergency shelter, or need to share their story over and over again in order to access DV services. The proposed King County 24-hour coordinated helpline will provide more streamlined and accessible trauma-informed care for survivors. I urge you to please support the full requested funding for the King County coordinated helpline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alicia, you are number fifty-one.
Hi, good evening, I have a group as well.
Great, okay. Please, and you are speaking about?
The budget and human services funding.
Okay.
Yeah, wonderful, thanks. So, good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry?
I just said, I just responded to your good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry.
It's been a long night for us all, I know. Good evening.
Linda, excuse me, would you set them up for a group?
Thank you. We're all affiliated with the Coalition Ending Gender-Based Violence, as are some of the programs you've already heard from and will hear from tonight. My name is Alicia Glenwell, I'm the Policy and Special Projects Manager at the Coalition. This is my colleague, Michelle Lucas, and her colleagues with the YWCA Sexual Violence Legal Services Program. SVLS is one of over forty member programs that work in Seattle and King County to prevent and end domestic and sexual violence, and at a time of unprecedented need in our city, Mayor Durkin's proposed budget doesn't maintain current levels of services, nor does it provide adequate funding to address the problems faced by our most vulnerable neighbors. One of the most egregious proposed cuts is to existing legal services for sexual assault survivors, funding that supports legal consultations and representation for 100 survivors a year. This program's been so successful that the Seattle Human Services Coalition, of which our coalition is a proud member, recommended funding to add an additional attorney, and now that funding is needed just to prevent a cut in services, and not to add additional critical services for this important program. Sexual assault programs are currently experiencing record increases in demand for their help. Our region's sexual assault hotline experienced an estimated 20% increase in calls in 2018, that was 300% increase at the time of the Kavanaugh confirmation, they were overloaded with calls, many requesting the very services that Mayor Durkin proposes to cut. We thank Councilmember Gonzalez for sponsoring the restoration of these funds, we call upon the rest of the council to join her in protecting these essential services. Preventing these proposed cuts is critical, but it isn't enough, new investments are needed to achieve a just and thriving community in Seattle. We urge you to fund the full Seattle Human Services Coalition budget recommendation portfolio, including a full 3.5% inflation adjustment for human service providers, and funding for a centralized 24/7 DV hotline, which will support survivors in navigating the complex social and legal systems in our city. You have the power to take meaningful steps to ensure that everyone can reach their full potential, we urge you to restore losses to current services and invest in solutions at the scale of the challenges our communities are facing. Thank you so much.
Good evening, council, my name is Michelle Lucas, and as my colleague Alicia mentioned, I'm with Sexual Violence Legal Services of the YWCA. Our organization supports the full Seattle Human Services Coalition recommendation portfolio. Specifically, I want to speak to the need for maintaining the full-time sexual assault attorney position that's been eliminated from the mayor's proposed budget, and stress the importance of renewing this funding. We'd like to thank Councilmember Gonzalez for designating this funding last year, and for supporting keeping these funds in the budget, and we ask that the rest of the council join her in that support. As an attorney with Sexual Violence Legal Services, I'm acutely aware of the growing need to support sexual assault survivors. When this funding was instated last year, the city led by example when it recognized the needs of sexual assault victims for advocacy and legal representation. A year later, as the Me Too movement continues to gain momentum, more and more survivors are feeling empowered to come forward and need help navigating the legal system to get protection orders to maintain their safety, to keep their confidential information from being shared and distributed, to protect their employment, housing, or educational opportunities, and to help them seek immigration relief. In the wake of what the country just witnessed with the United States Supreme Court, we can't ignore the fact that the system often revictimizes and re-traumatizes people who come forward to report assault. Now more than ever, the city needs to stand with survivors and show that we support them by continuing to fund this important service. Eliminating this position would mean that approximately 100 survivors, who are brave enough to come forward, won't receive the help they seek. We recognize the support the city has provided in the past, and stress that by not including this funding in the budget, the city would be cutting off crucial existing services for survivors in the community. For these reasons, we urge you to maintain funding for the full-time attorney position for sexual assault survivors, and fully fund the Seattle Human Services Coalition's budget recommendations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there, is there an individual named Melee, number fifty-two? I think that he or she may have been part of the Vietnamese seniors, so we don't have a fifty-two. The next one up is Tim Candela, number fifty-eight, talking about lead. Where's Tim? Okay, Tim, and after Tim, we have Andre Taylor, and then Dr. Glenna Martin, and it looks like we have two groups after Tim, so, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak again, so, again, my name is Tim Candela, I work at the Public Defender Association, but I'm gonna speak on behalf of when I was a REACH caseworker when lead was first implemented in 2011, and I think it's a really poignant story. We had a participant that was referred to us, and I worked with him diligently, and we went to every appointment together, when it was time to get benefits turned on, I was there, when it was time to go to the doctor, because he had multiple physical health issues, I was there. About six, seven months into case management, he wanted to access treatment. Something came up with my schedule where I was not able to go with this individual. He looked at me, and I, just stricken with fear, and he looked at me and said, "Tim, I can't go." I said, "No, no, you got this, like, we've done all these other things, you can do this," and he knows, he's like, "I can't go, like, I can't read." Every time I go to a treatment center, every time I went to a housing program, every time I was on probation, they would shove paperwork in front of my face, and they would expect me to be able to read. So, what we might deem is really the most obvious and complex barriers, like homelessness and substance use disorder, sometimes our privilege and what we have overlooks some of the miniscule things that we don't see, like a person's inability to read. I ended up rearranging my schedule to be able to go on to this appointment with him, and he ultimately ended up getting treatment. Got stabilized in his recovery, we ended up getting housing, and I can proudly say, seven years later, he's still maintaining that recovery. The interesting caveat is that this individual had been on the streets of downtown Seattle for thirty-plus years, and cycled in and out of state and local penitentiary and correction systems, and also was accessing probation. What those systems, in theory, are supposed to do is rehabilitate people, but clearly that didn't happen. But within two years of lead, we were able to do what the standard criminal justice system wasn't able to do. So while I emphasize the importance of businesses, this also has a deep impact on individuals where we look past and dive deep into building relationships with people, and address the barriers that most folks don't see. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Andre, Andre Taylor and Dr. Glenna Martin. Andre Taylor, number fifty-nine? All right, now, your group, come on up, but what I want to make sure is that the group isn't starting to recycle, because I recognize some of your faces here.
Not me, we've never been up here.
All right, five minutes to tell us about Budget for Justice, and then we've got Dr. Glenna Martin, that is wanting to talk about, I suppose, safe consumption.
Okay. City councilmembers, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Tamika Moss, I'm here with Budget for Justice and Not This Time. I'm asking the city council to divest $1.7 million in funds in 2019, and $2.5 million in funds in 2020, from probation and jail contracts, to a network of community-based intervention programs focused on healing, reconciliation, and public health. Organizations like Budget for Justice and Not This Time are directly connected to this community, advocating on behalf of communities they serve to impact change. If the city council allocates funds for community-based intervention programs offered by organizations like Budget for Justice and Not This Time, the money will be used to support marginalized survivors of violence with organizations like Community Justice, I'm sorry, Community Justice Project, Restorative Pathways for Youth and Young Adults with organizations like Community Passageways, we heard from them several times tonight, with organizations offering trauma-informed, healing-centered youth development, organizations like Creative Justice, Green Career Pathways, reducing risk of incarceration with organizations like Got Green, support for families who suffer loss from use of police force, and advocate for improved police practices with organizations like Not This Time. The money will be used to build immigrant community capacity to secure alternatives to the justice system with organizations like the Washington Defender Association Immigration Project. Coretta Scott King once said, "The greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members." Investing in this network of community-based organizations offering intervention programs is compassionate. I ask that you please do the right thing, invest in community-based intervention programs, divest from probation and jail contracts. Thank you for your time and consideration.
My name is Lauren, I have lived in Seattle since 1980, back in the days when you could have a job, teaching young people and giving them a head start, and now I struggle every day, I'm about a couple paychecks away from being homeless myself, like so many people who have meaningful jobs, but just don't make much money, the working class. Seattle's a growing city, there are more cranes here than in any other U.S. city, and those buildings being built are not for affordable housing. We have a concentration of power and wealth here, and the more power and wealth in the hands of a few leads to the decay of democracy. We all felt that decay when you all, except two councilmembers, succumbed to the pressure and bullying of Jeff Bezos, and the mayor, who behaves like a corporate puppet. A city that punishes the marginalized will crumble. If you lack the backbone to serve the people, and do not fight for a fair and just budget, you will lose that part of yourself that keeps you human, that is compassion and the beauty, to see the humanity and dignity in all people. Now, when you go to sleep at night in your warm house, in your warm bed, ask yourself, which side are you on? Please have a Budget for Justice, thank you.
Dr. Arlena Martin's next, Dr. Arlena Martin, and then Lori Watkins. Is Arlena Martin here? Nope, yes, number sixty, moving to sixty-one, Lori Watkins, and then sixty-two, Andrew Singh.
We're number sixty-one, but Lori Watkins actually had to leave early, so it'll just be the three of us speaking.
three of us speaking.
Okay.
My name is Kristin Emeth, and I am here as a King County community member that is in support of safe consumption sites here in Seattle. I'm here again today to urge city council to increase funding for harm reduction efforts such as the safe consumption sites. And as I mentioned at the first budget hearing, it has been two years since the opiate overdose task force recommendations were made, and this will be the sixth year in a row that overdose-related deaths have risen. Delaying deaths, delaying funding increase deaths that could have otherwise been prevented. This is an emergency that needs to be addressed immediately, and the action is needed on city council's behalf. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Tracy Roberts. I'm a Belltown resident, and I also support supervised consumption spaces. I'm just really, really annoyed. We have the approval for two pilots, and two years ago, we had a budget approved last year for $3.1 million, and here we are, almost the end, and how many people have died because we are ineffective in helping people who cannot speak for themselves? Last year, there was a study that came from the U.S. Senate Committee and said that overdose deaths have cost Washington State $34 billion, and marry mind, this is 3.1 million for a year. In four years, ending in 2016, we have $9.1 billion in 2016. This does not cover the cost of people who enter the medical system. These are just related to overdose deaths. There are so many people who enter the medical care with abscesses, infections, sepsis, endocarditis, heart conditions that require cardiac procedures, which I talked about the last time, and people who use drugs, IV drugs, they have procedures in Seattle every single day in cardiac procedure units. They need amputations, dressing changes, prosthetics, wheelchairs, and the care for after overdoses. If they enter a prison, as soon as they come out, they are more open to have overdoses, and it's a huge -- it just happens over and over again. I volunteer for the Hope Crew, where it's hashtag love them as they are, and this is what we should be doing, where we provide food, home reduction supplies, and connections. And it's really sad when we see people turn up, and they're bloodied, and they're bruised, concussed, and very recently, one woman turned up, she'd been raped, because when people use, they are vulnerable. They have their things taken from them, they're assaulted, and they have nowhere to go. They are afraid of going to the police because they're using. We need to be able to stand up for people who cannot speak for themselves. We have the ability to engage with people when they walk into a supervised consumption spaces. It's science, it works. I've heard the people saying that we should offer -- they should go into recovery. That already happens, people going to recover. My ex was an addict, and he went in 15 times. It doesn't work for everyone. It's fantastic when it does, but you have to realize that not everyone is made the same. We need to stand up for these people. We need to say, "You deserve a chance." The other thing as well, briefly, I'm going to talk about the Narcan. If you ever see the Narcan, these cost of public health $35 each, they're $70 each. They should not cost this much. It just costs a few dollars, maybe $7 for the Narcan. The one thing they're saying is it's the housing unit. People do medications where they do nasal decongestants using the same kind of unit. They jack up the prices. So when we open these supervised consumption spaces, I hope in January, that you actually start looking at getting the budget of these down. We need to haul the opioids, the people who have pushed the opioid crisis, the pharmaceutical companies, and we need to have them lower the doses of all these drugs and make it accessible to absolutely everyone who needs it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Casey J. Work. I work with formerly homeless people at DESC. It's really hard to watch poor people slowly die from resource starvation, which is what my job consists of largely. It's also really hard to watch our most traumatized people who've already been shoved out of society because we consider them junkies and below human level, to watch them slowly die from a kind of empathy starvation. The recommendations came out two years ago. About 700 people have died. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Andrew Tsang, followed by Catherine Ravello.
So Andrew, who is part of our group, has acquainted us his number?
Yeah, number 62.
62.
Okey-dokey.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Katie Wilson. I'm here representing the Transit Riders Union, and I'm here with fellow members of a new coalition called Move All Seattle Sustainably, or MAS. We are transportation and climate action groups that have come together to ask the council and the mayor's office to lead with urgency to achieve a safe, green, and equitable transportation system. Groups that are part of this coalition so far include 350 Seattle, 500 Women Scientists Seattle, Seattle Subway, Seattle Transit Blog, Seattle Neighborhood Greenways, Sierra Club, The Urbanist, and the Transit Riders Union.
So my name's Meg Wade. I'm with 350 Seattle, and as the recent U.N. IPCC report made clear, we are facing a climate disaster that demands bold action to cut greenhouse gas emissions. Transportation is by far the greatest contributor to Seattle's emissions. We have 12 years to act on climate. This budget does not create the momentum that we need to do what we need to get done in those 12 years. We have a few asks that we think might help us create the momentum that we need.
Hi, my name is Deborah Poe. I'm with the Sierra Club, and we are here to ask the council to lead on establishing a low-carbon, sustainable, equitable, and safe transportation system for everyone. We ask that you rethink the restriction on funding for the Del Ridge Multimodal Corridor and find funding to implement the accessible Mount Baker to help make Rainier Avenue Seattle's most dangerous corridor safer and more accessible. One of the major reasons that I moved back to my heart's home last year was to move back to a city leading this country on climate. We are asking you to do just that, to lead.
I'm Kenny Anderson with Seattle Subway. We have less than three months until the VITAC comes down and the period of maximum constraint begins, and with questions of equity, climate change, the economy, and our quality of life for all of us at stake, inaction is not an option. So one solution in particular offers a political home run. It's visible, it's effective, and it's also incredibly cheap. We can paint bus lanes. Focusing on routes serving downtown, this can be done as a pilot project to be maintained after it proves to be effective. Priorities could be extending Third to Denny and Aurora to serve points to the north, Ballard, Fremont, and Queen Anne. Route 62 on Dexter, Route 44 between Finney and I-5 to improve east-west connections, eastbound 40 on Leary, and southbound Mott Lake to serve Husky Stadium. We don't need money, we don't need to wait, we just need political will and a few coats of paint. Seattle will thank you.
Hi, councilmembers. My name's Owen Pickford. I'm the executive director at The Urbanist, also a member of MAS, the MAS Coalition. Moving All Seattle Sustainably means prioritizing people at intersections. In addition to the budget requests that the people before me have asked for, we should also not fund adaptive signals. Adaptive signals do not prioritize people at intersections. Instead, adaptive signals make the cars priority, which makes it more difficult for people to cross the street, use bikes, adds cars to our streets, getting in the way of the buses that are trying to get through downtown, and the people that rely on those buses. The Mercer Mess is not a model for successful transportation investments. Instead, we should be investing in priorities like home zones. The council should fund a pilot home zone, which puts people first in neighborhoods and makes streets accessible to all ages and abilities. The council should also fund and prioritize the basic bike network. It is one of the most efficient ways for people to get through downtown, and it is a safe way for people of all ages and abilities. Finishing the basic bike network is a high priority for our organization, and we strongly encourage you to speed up the investments in that.
And to close, we thought we would quote one of your own in today's Seattle Times, saying that in general, the MAS Coalition's budget asks aren't huge, and they think there's a path to at least getting some of it done. There's a lot on the list that won't require funding. It just requires some leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. So number 63 is Catherine Ravello. 64, Brandon, and 65 is 65.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Catherine Ravello, and I'm here with some of my coworkers from Plymouth Housing. Our organization provides permanent supportive housing to people moving out of homelessness. We operate over 1,000 units of affordable housing in Seattle. We're here to speak in support of the budget recommendations of the Seattle King County Coalition on Homelessness, the Seattle Human Services Coalition, and the Budget for Justice. As a member of these coalitions, we especially support the 3.5% COLA for all city contracts. Our residents move into Plymouth Housing with complicated trauma histories and have often spent years surviving outside. We know the experience of homelessness is traumatizing, and our residents need a safe and supportive environment to engage in healing. We've learned that traumatic episodes and trauma histories precipitate homelessness, and that poverty complicates the healing process. The staff at Plymouth Housing are at the heart of providing a safe and supportive environment. After a long history of homelessness and trauma, we know it takes time for our residents to feel safe. Consistent staffing is key to building trust with residents, and staff retention is essential to providing a stable home. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Catherine. Oh, are you guys -- I'm sorry, I didn't understand. You didn't sign up as a group, so are you all going to speak?
Yes.
Okay, would you give them three more minutes, please? Okay, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Brandon Getz, and I work for Plymouth Housing as a building manager. The building I get to manage has 70 residents that were fortunate enough to survive homelessness. And the reality is, there's a lot of people sleeping outside tonight that aren't going to survive the winter. So I'm here today to advocate for increased funding for permanent supportive housing. And it's an issue that's very personal to me, because I know the importance of being provided housing. And it wasn't until I was provided housing that I was able to start to address the mounting difficulties that I had from being homeless. It wasn't until I was provided a place to live that I was able to address my substance abuse, to address my declining physical health, eventually able to go back to school and to go back to work and find myself in the field I'm in today. I truly believe I wouldn't be here and alive today if I wasn't provided that housing. That was 10 years ago, actually 12 now. And so my story is not different from many of our residents. There's lots of people that have very similar stories that describe how housing saved their lives, and that's what we get to do at Plymouth. We get to build community, we get to support our residents. So not only do we get them inside, but we assure that they stay there. So thank you for your support in permanent housing.
Thank you, Brendan.
My name is Baruk Gadeh with Plymouth Housing Group. Our tenants come to us with a long history of trauma and special needs. We believe our tenants deserve to stay in housing regardless of their substance use, mental illness, or health-related complications. Our case managers continuously search and arm themselves with the latest methods, approaches, and practices, not to traumatize but realize the signs, symptoms, and impact of trauma in tenants when crises strike, not to force services but understand that services voluntary and not a condition of tenancy, not to cause tenants to hide their special needs but work with tenants to reduce harm that has been caused by their special circumstances, not to tell tenants what is right for them but engage with tenants to explore their own needs, reasons, desires, and abilities to make various changes in their lives. Please value the staff experience and the work they do and provide the minimal COLA increase of 3.5% so that our experienced and compassionate staff continue to do their job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, 66? Kelly, was that -- do we have 66 here?
That's me.
That's you? Okay, great. Thank you. Virginia Burton, 67. And Susan Siegel and Joe Carolis, 67, 68, 69? Who are you laughing at?
No.
Oh, sorry. Virginia Burton, 67. One more time, 67. Okay, Joe? Oh, I'm sorry, Susan? Is that you? There was somebody's name and then crossed out, and then Susan. All right.
And we are here as a group. We're just gathering.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Susan Siegel, and I'm executive director of New Beginnings. I want to thank you for your strong support for domestic violence survivors. To deepen that support, I urge you to fund the Seattle Human Services Coalition's full recommendation portfolio. And like some of my colleagues before me, I want to highlight one of those recommendations, a request to supplement funding from the King County Vets, Seniors, and Human Service Levy to support, for the first time in our community, a county-wide domestic violence helpline. Currently, no one helpline exists to serve King County DV survivors, and many, including many here in Seattle, are falling through the cracks. For some, they're very survivalist threatened. Here's a quote from one survivor. "You are in the most frightening situation in your life. You're being stalked by your ex, you're at risk of losing your job, you're facing homelessness, your children don't have food or diapers, and you're going around and around calling all these different phone lines trying to find help." With a big portion of the countywide helpline's expenses covered by the levy funding, this is our chance to bring our services up to 21st century standards. Please embrace this opportunity to promote the safety and liberation of survivors.
Good evening. My name is Nadine, and I'm a domestic violence survivor. When I found myself in conflict with my abuser, I turned to close friends and a religious leader. But people without personal experience or formal training simply don't understand the insidious dynamic of domestic violence. These very well-meaning people gave me bad advice, and when I followed it, my abuser exploded in anger. Only then did I call the local hotline for help. The volunteer I spoke to literally admitted she didn't know what to say, and no one else was available. I felt completely alone and at the mercy of this enraged, unhinged person who was threatening me, so I called the police. Because he lives in a different state, my abuser couldn't drive to my house to confront me, which I'm certain he would have. The responding officer did have the proper training. He called my abuser and masterfully talked him down. I later wish I had spoken with the DV advocate before acting on my friend's advice. With their experience and wisdom, they could have helped me de-escalate the situation. But when I did call the hotline, no such person was even available to me. Domestic violence victims need a way to reach properly-trained people who can advise us when we don't know what to do or who else to trust. I ended up safe, but other women aren't so lucky. A hotline isn't just about having a shoulder to cry on. Lives are at stake. Please help us.
Hi there. My name is Jeannie Sickel, and I serve on the board of New Beginnings and Domestic Violence. I'm also a domestic violence survivor. I want to share a story with you from a recent caller to our helpline. A survivor all calls Sophia described the ways her husband has abused her and their two children. Sophia was called from a prepaid phone that the neighbors gave her as they heard her and her husband yelling at her. She had only a small window of time to talk. Her husband tracks her miles on her car, and they have a Nest camera outside their house and tracks when she comes and goes. He only allows her to attend activities that he approves and sometimes shows up just to see if she's really there. Each day, Sophia's husband gives her a list of chores to do around the house, and if she doesn't complete them, he becomes physically violent. Sophia moved from Mexico years ago, and her husband promised to file an immigration paperwork but hasn't done it. He constantly threatens to have her deported and make fun of her English, but he won't allow her to go to ESL classes. Sophia has only small amounts of money that her husband gives her for groceries, and she tried calling domestic violence phone numbers before, but one time, the advocate could not get an interpreter. The other time, she told the advocate her whole story, only to hear that she needed to call a different program because of where she lives in the county. On the call with us, Sophia started crying and says she doesn't know how she's going to go on. No survivor should have to struggle to get help like this. Please help us fund the countywide DV helpline for Sophia and many others in King County. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a domestic violence survivor. My name's Carol Lund. I recently was assaulted and experienced -- after the assault, I was unable to operate my phone, unable to dial 911, unable to make the decision that I needed to call the police. the decision that I needed to call the police or ask for help or that I had actually been assaulted. This helpline is essential, provides support services that are unavailable anywhere else for trauma and domestic violence survivors. Thank you. Please fund it. Thank you.
Thank you. 69, Joe? And then Lalania Olsby is 70 and Sarah Harrison is 71. Joe, welcome.
Hi. I'm Joe Carolis. I am the manager of Seattle's outdoor meal site, or Meals Under the Bridge, on behalf of OSL. OSL, Operation SAC Lunch, is a 29-year meal provider currently serving more than 1 million no-cost nutritionally-dense meals annually to those struggling with hunger in our city. Our Food in Motion program rescues and redistributes more than 1.5 million pounds of viable quality food annually. We are a linchpin in the emergency system here, meal system here in Seattle. We are also a fortunate recipient of the sweetened beverage tax and we want you to know how very much we appreciate it and we want to thank you for that. As an organization who hires homeless individuals and helps them out of homelessness, OSL understands intimately the need for shelter beds. We have 42 employees, eight of whom live in shelters, many of whom we've heard from today. If someone is unsheltered, they are also hungry. People who live in shelters need nutritionally-dense meals to aid in their well-being and forward motion, just as we all do. Please remember that meals must be married with shelter when considering funding. And please restore funding for Lipton Springs Overnight Shelter Beds and funding for the Meals Partnership Coalition, which represents more than 100 meal providers in Seattle. We support all Seattle Human Services Coalition recommendations, including inflation adjustments. Thank you for your time.
Joe, thanks for all your work. Number 70 is Lalania. 70 and 71 have left us. Sarah Harrison is 71. Are you 72?
Yes.
Okay. And it's Janine?
She graciously ceded her time to me because she had to leave.
Okay, what's your name?
My name is Brittany Bolee. I'm here on behalf of the Sierra Club where I co-chair the Housing Committee.
And did you have a different number, Brittany?
I did. I was originally number 111.
Sweet, we can cross that one off.
Yeah, I'm just looking. All right, well, we won't see you a second time?
No.
And welcome to number 71.
Thank you very much. As I mentioned, I am the co-chair of the Sierra Club Seattle Group's Housing Committee, so I am here to speak on our recommendations this evening. While we are encouraged by the mayor's budgetary attention to our housing crisis, we encourage the council to look even deeper and further for funds, bearing in mind the estimated millions and millions and millions beyond what's budgeted that we need to fully address the problem. Specifically, we ask you to continue funding the successful share and wheel programs and to commit to opening at least one more supportive housing project each year to help our neighbors who are working to transition out of homelessness. We also support the use of a racial equity toolkit to evaluate our growth strategies for ways that they exclude disadvantaged communities from housing and ownership near desirable public amenities. Finally, we believe that the fair and equitable choice is for all proceeds from the sweetened beverage tax to be directed towards the communities most impacted and in accordance with their needs, such as extra support to food security programs and closing the food security gap. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brittany. Jason? Jason Pena, Carolyn Bermer, and Gemma Guten? Goiten? Gaeten? All right, so 73? Raise your hand if you're 73. Good, please come on up. Jason, 74. Carolyn?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to make a pitch in case any of our security officers are listening to encourage people if they are downstairs to come on up since we got a... Okay, great. That's good to see you all.
Lovely to have you. Okay. Okay, yeah, big groups, I love it. So are you all 73? Nice. Okay. So Jason? Please. Whoever's kicking this off, please do.
I think I'm going to be starting. I'm Betty McNeely.
Yes, of course you are. Nice to see you, Betty.
Nice to see you all. And I'm the Director of Program Services and Probation for the City of Seattle and Seattle Municipal Court. We're here as a group today and please, I want to let everybody know how proud I am of the group that I'm here with today, the professionals and the commitment and the passion for the work they do and the people they serve. We're here today to talk about the proposal that would result in the elimination of the probation department in Seattle. Not only does our budget fund traditional probation, we also are funded for such things as pre-trial services. We are also funded for alternatives to confinement, our diversion partnerships, our nationally-recognized Court Resource Center will be presenting in February in Little Rock if anybody would like to come, and as well as many of other programs and services. I want to thank the council for their history of being supportive for us to be able to do the innovative work that we're able to do as a court and continuing to support us in the work that we do. The court probation embraces working with partners. And I think if you review some of our information, you'll see the various wide spectrum of partners that we're working with. We want to continue to work with partners and intend to do so. And a couple of our probation folks would like to speak while we're here.
Thank you, Betty.
Good evening. My name is Kenny James. I am a probation counselor with Seattle Municipal Court. I work in the domestic violence unit. 54% of mass shootings are related to domestic violence and police are three times likely to be murdered responding to a domestic violence call. Many offenders of domestic violence have been perpetrating violence long before they are brought into the court and the victims have been living with this behavior for a significant amount of time. I think that alone speaks to the need for supervision of high-risk, high-needs defendants. Victims want the abuse to stop. That's why we work closely with the Mayor's Office, Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault to fund programs like our Court to Domestic Violence Intervention Pilot Project, which is a new treatment program focusing on individual needs of the perpetrator. We... The program focuses on goals to create healthy relationships while decreasing the overall involvement in criminal and civil courts. It takes a coordinated community response to address the mix of violence. Terminating a probation department removes an integral component to this response and handicaps any efforts to assist defendants in changing their abusive behaviors and ensure community and victim safety. Thank you.
So I'm Carol Bell Daniel and I've worked for over 18 years in probation, 15 of them with Seattle Municipal Court. And I currently manage the Court Resource Center as well as a variety of staff in the probation department. And as an African-American woman living in South Seattle, I know about the violence and the things that we want to enter and the levels of intervention we want to start to implement early with the youth. And I commend the work that I hear these programs bringing to the table. But I don't believe that that will adequately address what we're doing here at the court. We are meeting the needs of the whole person. We look at everything that's going on with every client that's coming in there and we are there to meet them where they are. And jail is always the last resort, but we're looking at public safety and we're looking at what is best for the individual as well as the community.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jason Pena. I had an about-face change in my supervision style when I began my now 13-year career as a probation counselor with Seattle Municipal Court. I previously had started my career supervising in Texas as a parole officer, which we all know is a prison-based system. So I'm grateful that our department embraces a client-based supervision model where the court orders are focused on the needs at hand that brought the person before the court as opposed to multiple and unachievable conditions. I'm grateful that we work with those that need the most intervention through supervision where we explore the options available within the community to not only help the individual comply with court orders but to also help in changing their lives. We employ a holistic approach. We know this may be the end result of bad results or it may be the beginning. So the supervision and encouragement we provide at probation to our clients is invaluable. We strive to put forth options that we will have our clients leave us in a better situation than when we began our relationship.
Thank you very much and thanks to all of you for coming. Appreciate the fact that you stayed so late. Number 74, Carolyn Bermer. Would you raise your hands now so I can see if you're here? Great. Okay, it looks like we have groups almost for the rest of this, this sheet. So come on up. So who's Carolyn? All right?
But we're speaking as a group, so we...
Okay.
We want to introduce ourselves. I'm Clara Humphries.
I'm Kami Potter.
I'm Caroline.
I'm Desmond.
I'm Ramona Tellus.
Nice folks. We've got some cough drops up here. Would you like something?
So we'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak before you today, but we'd also like to acknowledge and honor that we are on Duwamish land. Today, we will be reading you an open letter we wrote, though unfortunately, we won't have time to address all of you individually. We are extremely grateful for what you have done for our city and sincerely value this time given to us to voice our concerns.
Dear Councilmember Lisa Herbold.
I am your neighbor. And therefore, you are my advocate. Thank you for abundant beautiful parks, libraries, and the work you do in keeping West Seattle a place we're proud to call home. The streets are clean and the community is growing in ways that no one expected. And yet...
I am also your neighbor. I live down the hill in my community of South Park, a beautiful and diverse neighborhood where, according to Seattle Parks Foundation, people live eight years less than the average Seattle citizen as a result of environmental injustice. While there have been many industrial waste cleanup efforts, the contaminated air we breathe is still polluting our bodies. Affordable healthcare is the only way to tackle this issue. Community centers such as Neighbor Care Health offer vital coverage to many family and individuals, but their current budget is not enough to help everyone in need. Additional funding to Health and Human Services can solve this issue.
Dear Councilmember Bruce Harrell.
Thank you for your commitment to cutting-edge solutions and forward thinking. You know the facts. South Seattle is subjected to the ongoing segregation of our city. That is why we have community nonprofits that support those living in the result of poverty. As Seattle becomes more inaccessible, these programs need even more additional funding. Look at the budget of these nonprofits that is given by Seattle City compared to the Seattle Police Department, an ineffective system that continues to disproportionately target minority groups. There are $7 million going to wage raises within SPD while Black Seattleites still only have a median income of $25,700, which is less than half of the median Seattle income and only 1/3 of an average police officer wage. Money in the general fund needs to be prioritized for Health and Human Services.
Dear Councilmember Rob Johnson.
As stated on your website, the goal of your office is to encourage civic engagement in a manner that is efficient and enjoyable. We are trying to do just that. Use this platform provided to us to ensure the needs of those marginalized in this city are understood. Your District 4 neighborhoods are known as safe, beautiful communities to live, but only if you can afford the median home price of nearly $900,000. While we appreciate these neighborhoods for their affluence that brings money back into our city, it must also be recognized that only a select few can afford to live there. For those struggling low-income people being displaced in this city every day, a strong network of Health and Human Services is needed to ensure prosperity is available.
Dear Councilmember Deborah Juarez.
Thank you for your voice of advocacy in the North End. In the proposed budget, $692,800,000 are set to be spent on public safety. A clear example of this breakdown of this money is in your district, where $11 million has been allocated for a future North Precinct. We are not denying that public safety is a vital part of a functioning community. However, we do believe that there are other ways to tackle the systematically rooted issues of crime and emergency service needs besides increasing the number of officers. 217 shelter beds are being cut, the same ones that are slept in by our most vulnerable and impoverished neighbors. Keeping these people off the streets drastically reduces the cost of emergency services and makes it less likely that these citizens will be arrested. It is clear in the proposed budget that prison beds are being prioritized over shelter beds. Money currently reserved for public safety needs to be relocated to Health and Human Services to combat these problems.
Dear Councilmember Sally Bagshaw.
I am your neighbor. My home is Belltown where in the past decade, I witnessed the rise of homelessness in our city. Homelessness was declared a state of emergency in Seattle near three years ago, and since then, the crisis has only worsened. In 2016, the one-night count found 2,942 people sleeping on the streets. A year later, that number increased by 31%. Currently, a fourth of new... Oh, sorry. A fourth of new apartment units in downtown are unoccupied. It's clear why this is happening. Lack of rent control in urban areas is creating opportunities for landlords to kick residents out of their homes and onto the streets, which causes displacements of low-income people. This is why emergency housing is so important in Seattle. This is why funding for human health and services is so important in Seattle.
Thank you all again for your time and consideration, especially those of you who we have not been able to address. O'Brien, Gonzalez, Mosqueta, Sawant, thank you so much for your past and future support.
Sincerely, high schoolers around Seattle.
And people in this room.
And all of your Seattle neighbors.
Center School as well? Well done. Okay, Gemma? Hello? And who's Gemma?
Hi, we are also Center School students and we've prepared a three-minute testimony.
Okay, welcome.
Hi, I'm Gemma Gaetan.
I'm Simon Martin.
I'm Kelsey Myhock.
I'm Sophia Reynolds.
I'm Rachel Short and we're students at the Center School.
Seattle City Council, thank you for giving us an opportunity to voice our opinion on the proposed budget.
Use a microphone if you can.
Seattle City Council, thank you for giving us an opportunity to voice our opinion on the proposed budget. The Center School seniors are deeply concerned about the decrease in funding to Health and Human Services and the effect it will have on our homeless and low-income populations. We would like to take this opportunity to urge you to increase this funding and be consistent with your previous statements in support of marginalized communities.
When discussing the budget, we must acknowledge that Health and Human Services is not just a department. It is the determining factor in the fate of thousands of impoverished people whose lives are often overlooked. Only 5% of the total budget goes to Human Services and with your help, it can get the attention it deserves. The redistribution of funding can make profound differences in human lives. The mayor has proposed $65 million in payback for police officers for cost-of-living increases but does not provide the $18 million needed for adequate inflation adjustments for Health and Human Services.
Councilmember Mosqueta, you said...
And I quote...
We need policy solutions that recognize that folks who are living unsheltered need holistic healthcare and case management services. Many have experienced trauma and many of us in Seattle are just one paycheck or health crisis away from being unsheltered ourselves. Yet, the budget will leave close to 300 people unsheltered who are currently housed.
Councilmember Sawant, thank you for your support towards Human Services in the past. In 2015, you said, and I quote, "5 million dollars towards homelessness is nowhere near enough. It's time for the council and mayor to back up the dramatic press conferences with real resources and funding." The budget proposes a $150,000 cut to a program that provides attorneys for immigrants and refugees who are victims of domestic violence. Meanwhile, the police get $44 million in their pension fund over the next two years.
Councilmember Bagshaw, you said, and I quote, "Everyone needs housing instability, yet no one has the unconditional right to camp at schools on busy sidewalks or in parks so that the public use is impeded. But if you were to support this budget, then why are tents still appearing under I-5 and people are sleeping in doorways?"
Councilmember O'Brien, you said, and I quote, "We must significantly increase our investment in emergency shelter and subsidized housing, but only $58 million of the general fund proposal for Health and Human Services is going to shelters and housing."
Councilmember Herbold, you said, and I quote, "We are in a homelessness state of emergency. We need to bill today to meet the need. Between 2014 and 2017, the number of households accessing homelessness services grew by an average of 11% per year. Adjusting the budget will be critical to achieving a shared quality of life throughout Seattle."
The homelessness crisis in our city will continue to persist as long as Health and Human Services are not given sufficient funding. The cuts to programs that help those in need will only add to the growing problem. We are proposing that the city moves the necessary funds from the budget's Public Safety Administration and Transportation sections to Health and Human Services. If you have the power to make these promises, you have the power to follow up on them. Put your money where your mouth is. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much for getting organized. Gemma, so the next one is Kim Lundgren, it looks like, 76? 76 here, please raise your hand. 77 is Elizabeth Carpenter, please raise your hand. 79 is John Gibbons. 79? Matthew Redkins is 81.
John has left, but he signed up for the Transit Riders Union to speak as a group.
I'm sorry, which number?
82.
78.
78.
That was Katie signing up. We can wait till 82, we have a...
Great.
Okay, well, that's all right. You're all here, let's go.
Let's just go. I can talk if you don't mind. I'm Heidi Campbell, and I represent the Transit Riders Union, and I'm also a member of the Washington Council of the Blind. My glasses on. This is our little petition. Transit Riders Union Group Testimony. We're here representing the Transit Riders Union. Our members are transit riders. We are working people and poor people, a lot of us are poor. We are seniors, we are students, there's a lot of students, and there's people with disabilities. I happen to be one of them, I'm partially blind. We have a number of priorities that we wish to see covered in the biannual budget of 2019 to 2020. First, we stand together with the New Coalition of Transit and Climate Action Organizations, move all Seattle sustainably, also known as MAS. We are facing a climate disaster that demands bold action to cut greenhouse gas emissions, and transportation is by far the greatest contributor to those emissions, not to mention agribusiness and the like. We have to act rapidly to make it easier for people to get around the city without the need for driving. The Transit Riders Union urges the council and the mayor's office to lead, to find a way to achieve a safe, green, and equitable transportation system. It's totally important. We support the budget asks laid out by the MAS Coalition in the letter to the city council and Mayor Durkin.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Hillary Keys, also a member and organizer of the Transit Riders Union. We ask that the council to ensure that all revenue from the sugary beverage tax goes towards food security programs, education, and job chaining for the communities most impacted by this tax. If we start putting this revenue into a general fund, then this tax becomes just another part of our extremely regressive tax system. The Fresh Bucks Expansion Program is not even up and running yet. We don't know how much revenue is needed to close the food security gap. It doesn't make sense to take funds from this program before it even starts. If the sugary beverage tax is generating more revenue than expected, the city should be working with Got Green and other community organizations to figure out the best use of that revenue, not using it to plug budget holes. The Transit Riders Union stands with Got Green in urging that all revenue from the sugary beverage tax goes back to the communities most impacted by the tax in the form of food security programs like Fresh Bucks, quality education, and job training programs. Thank you.
Hi, and I'm Pauline Van Cenis, and I'm one of the co-founders of the Transit Riders Union. People are the heart and soul of our community. Hopefully, they make our community as vibrant as the leaf in my hair. It's hard to believe that November 2nd, it'll be the third anniversary of the declaration of a state of emergency on the homeless crisis. Since that time, all the numbers have only climbed: people living in homelessness, people sleeping unsheltered, and people dying outside. I've been part of the count in several years, so it's amazing how much that number has grown over the years. And... I also cannot figure out how a city like ours can face the crisis of this magnitude and even consider cutting out shelter beds. The Transit Riders Union believes that to do so would be an irresponsible action. I know many people who are my personal friends who live outside all the time, and the numbers are only growing. And I hope that I will not become one of those statistics in the near future. At the moment, I'm still renting from a more or less irresponsible slum landlord, who he has turned over a leaf or two and fixed his place up, but it's still not exactly what I'd call a very good place to live. And so I guess I would consider myself about three feet above street level and living on the street.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Now, just backing up here to make sure that I got everybody who signed up, is John Gibbons here, 79? Ann Hosh, 80?
We're a group.
Yeah, we're a group.
Okay.
Good evening, City Council. My name is James Myers.
I'm Ann Hosh.
And I'm Hannah Goldstein. We are concerned students of the Center School and citizens of Seattle, and we thank you for hearing us tonight. We love Seattle. It has good food, beautiful flora, iconic landmarks, and blossoming opportunities to experience arts and culture. We have seen it grow and change. We've noticed the refurbished buildings and swell of businesses, but we've also seen the abundance of new apartment buildings and condominiums, the drastically increasing house prices, and the thousands of Seattleites that can no longer afford their rent and are forced to become homeless despite working tires.
We all know that gentrification is rampant within our city. Some of my classmates have experienced extreme rent hikes firsthand, and even as I live in a house that my parents own, I've watched local business owners lose their storefronts to new overpriced apartment complexes and seen consignment stores turn into coffee shops that sell an eight-ounce mocha for $6, and that's no exaggeration. For me, rising prices means I just don't buy a $6 coffee. But for a larger portion of Seattle, it means deciding between dinner or healthcare.
This problem is systematic and visible throughout the city. In the past years, the top 20% of Seattleites have taken half the residents' income, and the bottom 20% have taken only 3%. We headquartered multi-billion-dollar industries and house the world's richest man, but won't fund basic housing services. As of 2017, nearly 12,000 Seattleites are homeless, half of whom are without shelter. These numbers place Seattle third in the homeless rates in the nation. This is unacceptable.
Those affected by poverty and homelessness are disproportionately people of color. Black Seattleites are twice as likely to face eviction than their white counterparts. This much is evident in the Central District, where historically, black residents have been priced out of their homes to be replaced by a majority-white demographic. Seattle's POC population has increased from 13% to 30% since 2000, with the majority of these new residents being immigrants working minimum-wage jobs.
Minimum wage in Seattle has risen, approximately $15 an hour, depending on employer, yet living wage is estimated to be around $23 an hour at least. This means many people cannot afford healthcare, healthy foods, or other basic needs, on top of record-high housing prices. Those surviving on minimum wage or less are not getting adequate support from their city. As city council, you have the opportunity to provide the support that other government bodies refuse.
Focusing Health and Human Services will provide the healthcare and specialized education that we desperately need. Nonprofits like the Southwest Youth and Family Services receive vital funding from you, the city, to provide immigrant resources and education with childcare to help vulnerable families and their communities thrive. Southwest Youth and Family Services, along with other services in the Human Coalition, heavily rely on the city's money to tackle issues of homelessness, poverty, hunger, violence, and much more. We urge you to keep these nonprofits in mind when reviewing Durkin's budget. They are critical to your constituents.
We appreciate that the sweetened beverage tax is being allocated back to nutrition and public health, and I would also like to invoke Number 21's testimony that wanted to prioritize low-income demographics when regarding that tax funds. But by adding 40 new traditional police officers under the 2019-2020 budget, Seattle is funding a force that has failed many of our neighbors. Rather, we strongly suggest that the city supports alternative public safety positions such as trained navigational outreach teams with the purpose of seeking out and assisting those suffering on streets into warm, permanent homes and stable jobs to emphasize Seattle needs capable caseworkers that will foster a sense of community and work with and for citizens.
If homeless and low-income people are part of the public, then why don't they get as much funding for their safety? Here are about 120 signatures for those who share our opinions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Nicely done, Center School. 81 is Matthew Redkins. 81 here? 82 is Pauline Van Cenis. 83, Arc Skurdal and Diana Koala. Okay, great, thank you. And after Arc, we've got Lauren Totsi, Erin Counts, Sonia, Ellen Taft.
Hi, I was with Eric. Eric had to leave, and so I'm inviting my colleagues from Faith Action Network to also speak at my timeframe. I'm Diana Koala. I'm going to let my colleagues speak, and then I'll speak.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers. So, we're a group, and my name is Erica West. I'm with the Church Council of Greater Seattle, and first, I would like to affirm, no worries, our support of the Seattle Human Services Coalition's budget portfolio and the budget recommendations of the Seattle King County Coalition on Homelessness.
I'm Allison Truzona, and I'm also with the Church Council of Greater Seattle. I would like to acknowledge that I stand here tonight with members of the faith communities that host Sites for Share Wheel, and would like to tell their stories that share its positive impact on the life of their church and their city.
Good evening, my name is Tara Millerberry, and I am here as a staff member of Faith Action Network, as well as a member of Trinity United Methodist Church in Ballard. Trinity has hosted a share shelter for years, providing 20 men a safe, warm place to sleep every night of the year. It is cost-effective, empowering, and life-saving. As you have heard again, year after year, without shelter, people die. I also worked in shelters in Seattle for five years, and I've seen the impact that city cuts to vital programs makes on the lives of the most vulnerable in our communities. The mayor's plan to cut programs that sustain the lives of our neighbors could be a death sentence, as we have already lost 98 people outside or by violence this year. It was in my church last spring where the hatred of Ballard towards people experiencing homelessness showed its face. You can ask Councilmember O'Brien how unwelcome people facing homelessness are in Ballard, as community groups took over my sacred space to shout obscenities at those we are called to value most. We cannot send our shelter guests out to that unsafe environment, neither the physical one nor the social one. Faith Action Network and the Church Council of Greater Seattle affirm that faith communities have been able to play a critical role in alleviating homelessness for decades through the leadership of Share and Wheel. We join our voices with our faith communities and organizational partners to ask you to save the funding for Share Wheel in the 2019-2020 budget. As the high school students powerfully declared earlier, this is your choice. You do not have to force our neighbors onto the streets. We do not have to have homelessness in Seattle. We are choosing to do so. We urge you instead to choose the life-giving shelter that programs like Share and Wheel provide. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diana Koala. My day job, I'm an OB-GYN at Swedish Hospital, but I'm also very strong in my neighborhood. I live in Lake City area. My church is the Maple Leaf Lutheran Community Church. We have hosted a share program for almost 20 years. We have 20 people that sleep every single night of the year in our basement. We give at least $4,000 a year toward this program in part of the rent, the heat, the garbage pickup. We have showers, we have laundry facilities. We provide all this for free to you as part of participating in Share. That's a gift that my church is giving to the city to help the vulnerable, and we want to keep doing that, but we need to participate with Share for that, and so my church asks that you help this and keep the Share program alive.
Thank you all for coming. All right, so 84. Lauren Totsi, 84. Very nice. And then we've got 85, Erin Counts. I don't see Erin. Oh, Erin, okay. And then Ellen Taft, please, go ahead.
Hi, Lauren had to go, so I took her number 84. My name's Jarday Kane, I'm 106, so you can cross that out if you want.
I beg your pardon, what did you just say?
That Lauren had to go, so I took her number...
Okay, and then take you off at 86?
No, I was number 106.
All right, so 86 is Sonia Joseph, and I had heard she's left. Okay, please, start over and...
I think she was 105.
Lauren, this is Lauren.
Cool, thanks.
Lauren spoke earlier.
Okay, so Lauren's spoken, and you've got her card.
I have 84.
Okay. And what is your name?
Jarday Kane, I'm a clinical services support administrator at Evergreen Treatment Services.
All right, please, go ahead.
Cool. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight in support of Councilmember O'Brien's proposal to allocate $762,000 to the Human Services Department to provide a nonprofit organization inside Seattle, such as Evergreen Treatment Services, funding to increase on-demand treatment for people with substance use disorder. We are a local nonprofit that provides medication-assistant treatment for adults with opioid use disorder using methadone, buprenorphine-based medications, with supportive wraparound services including medical monitoring, counseling, drug screens, and other services. We also operate the REACH program, which provides street-based case management and outreach services to more than 3,500 homeless adults across King County. This proposed funding would provide additional staffing, approximately six nurses and six counselors and/or case managers, that would increase the availability of treatment on demand. With this staff in our agency, this funding alone would allow us to keep our doors open hours more each day and provide access to treatment for hundreds more patients. The additional staffing would go a long way towards meeting the current lack of capacity directly related to staffing shortages that organizations like ours face, as we try to provide access to the many who are seeking admission every single day. The crisis of substance use needs you to be bold, innovative, and passionate. When finalizing the city budget, I urge you to support Councilmember O'Brien's budget proposal to help meet the need of our community's most vulnerable populations. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your coming. Erin Counts, I think you're up. And after Erin, then Ellen, I know you've gotten up three times, but I believe Erin Counts is behind you.
So Erin had to leave, so he asked me to read a statement that he prepares.
But not five minutes, okay? We love you guys.
We'll do it in two minutes, so we're here on behalf of Budget for Justice and Creative Justice, but I'm going to be speaking as an individual for Erin. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Erin Counts, father, educator, and director of Creative Justice. Creative Justice provides arts-based alternatives to youth incarceration. Just three years ago, this council resolved to work towards zero youth incarceration in our city. The council did this understanding that the authority to prosecute and jail youth in our region primarily resides with King County, not the city of Seattle. So while that resolution was important in articulating the values we aspire to, it is and was largely ceremonial. That doesn't need to be the case. Here we are again, as a community, asking you to put some muscle behind the resolution that you passed and be bold in standing up for the values of the council and the city. Our Seattle wants and deserves better. The community knows its own struggles and needs and has the answers to what ails us. Systems-oriented interventions like extended probation do a good job of creating opportunities to catch somebody falling short, but most definitely are not the best method to address the needs of those who are court-involved. The best methods come out of authentic relationships that consider and understand the whole of a person, what their home is, the family members that are impacted, the hopes and struggles that drive their days. In relationship, we can rally around folks in crisis with supportive community that supports and promotes their healing and all of... and promotes their healing and all of our well-being. We are not beholden to keep doing things in the same old manner, nor is anyone entitled to keep a job that does harm. Budget for Justice offers a better path towards the safe, healthy, and thriving communities we all want, and does so without threat of incarceration as a motivator.
Thank you, I'm going to have to ask you to stop now. Appreciate your reading the statement. Ellen? Jennifer is eighty-eight. Gretchen Taylor is eighty-nine. And Christopher Anderson is ninety.
Hi, my name is Ellen Taft. I'm here not to psychoanalyze the problem like everybody else has been doing, but to offer a solution for funding. That solution is, in order to fund public housing, social services, and public transport, is that the city of Seattle lobby the state of Washington to take over the manufacture and retail sales of the cannabis industry, so that the revenues can go to the people of the state rather than to shady individuals. I've made up a word, I call it "statalize." It comes from the word "nationalized," which the British used when they nationalized various industries after World War II. Also, I would like the city council to tell the mayor to audit the budget and identify and collect the uncollected revenues, so that I can start actually voting for tax increases, because I won't vote for any tax increases until those uncollected revenues are collected. Also, would you stop subsidizing multi-billionaire Vulcan Paul Allen's Yesler Terrace Project and all the other private developers in town? The cannabis retailers in my neighborhood have had a very destructive effect on the neighborhood, and I don't see that we have had any public benefit. Please, tap into the revenue of the cannabis industry. Perhaps the only thing you can do is have the city of Seattle manage the retail industry and save the revenue for the people.
Thank you, Ellen.
Bye-bye.
Jennifer, eighty-eight, is Jennifer here? Gretchen Taylor, I don't see Gretchen. Christopher Anderson?
Good evening, thank you. My name is Christopher Anderson.
Before you get going.
Sure.
Caesar Garcia?
Good.
Okay, well, that gives us two ready to go. Thank you.
Yeah.
Please, go ahead. Sorry to interrupt you.
My name is Christopher Anderson, and I stay at Share's Bonk House Night Shelter, and thank you for hearing me tonight. I'm speaking out because I'm disappointed that Human Services Department continues to obfuscate and obstruct a clear understanding of Share. Specifically, two weeks ago, several of us pointed out that the percentage of people in Share shelters moving into housing in the first six months of 2018 was 16%. Now, after nine months, that number is 17%. Instead of acknowledging this, however, Human Services staff included a totally different type of shelter into the equation deliberately to detriment of both of those programs. Our sisters at Wheel have operated a Low Barrier Indoor Shelter for 18 years. That means women can come in at any hour, in any condition, and be safe. While that, you've heard tonight, is such a very important program, but it is entirely different from Share shelters, the indoor shelters that require sobriety and everyone doing a fair share of self-management. Until a month or two ago, Wheel Low Barrier Women's Shelter didn't have case management at all. Its percentage of exits to housing, therefore, was the same as similar models such as DESE at the Morrison, close to 1%. The Human Services Department combined figures for Share and Wheel, two totally different shelter models, to minimize the success and effectiveness of Share's indoor shelters themselves. That's how they got the 8%, and that misrepresents and hinders good work instead of supporting it. If they don't understand what they're doing, they should be released from lack of competence. If they do know what they're doing, it is to mislead. Thank you for letting me properly represent that information. Generally, homelessness in Seattle could use improvements. We all strive to improve Share, but Share shouldn't be punished because some in HSD don't like us. Please do the right thing and support Share and Wheel Indoor Shelters.
Thank you, Christopher. Caesar, and then it looks to me like ninety-three, is it Sean? Is Sean still here? Good, okay. And then the next one is Andy Nagel. Please, go ahead, Caesar.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Caesar Garcia, and I'm a co-organizer with Lake City Collective, which is a minority-led group that has a mission to lift the voices of immigrant families in North Seattle. I'm speaking on behalf of families who historically haven't been hurt and haven't been here to advocate for themselves. My goal tonight is to plant the seed of geographical equity on you. We all have heard equity, the word equity, but we have, many of you have heard geographical equity. This is because before our group, Lake City Collective, was born, especially, and especially after we started working for our community, we have seen and suffered firsthand how city departments have directed their efforts to fund capacity-building projects for communities mostly south of the Ship Canal. Therefore, underprivileged immigrants in the north continue to be underfunded, underserved, and underrepresented in city processes. I would like to give you an example. In nine organizations were awarded funds during the second round of the OPCD's Equity Development Initiative. Of those, only one was awarded for a project north of the Ship Canal, and out of the all twelve members of the EDI Advisory Board, only one came from North Seattle. Needless to say, our communities are also facing displacement, and in a nutshell, you can tell that we are underfunded and underrepresented. We are here encouraging you to please ask every department, and especially making OPCD a priority, to please tend to account the history of underfunding in our communities.
Thank you very much for coming. I appreciate your words. Sean, and then after Sean, Andy Nagel, and Janice Trayvon.
Good evening, council members. Sean Van Eyck with PTE Local 17. Our union represents nearly 3,000 city employees, that's a full quarter of city workers, and I am here speaking on behalf of Local 17, as well as the Coalition of City Unions, which on the whole represents over half the city of workers. And I just want to point out that I'm kind of glad I got this late slot, because I think this would be the first time I'm taking a position in this chamber, where I might be booed. So, but for those who would be inclined to boo me, I would just like to remind them that if you were a member of my labor union, I would be here on your behalf tonight as well. So, I'm here in opposition to the funding component of the proposal that has been submitted by Budget for Justice. Budget for Justice is proposing a reduction in the budget for probationary services at Seattle Municipal Court by 30% year-over-year, with a goal of achieving a full 90% reduction. This proposal, if adopted, would effectively reduce a unit with a represented staff of 45 to 4.5 full-time positions in three years. It proposes divert those funds to the lead program and several community groups to provide expanded diversion services, as well as early intervention with at-risk youth and immigration populations. Their goal is ultimately to reduce the number of people who get caught up and ensnared in the criminal justice system, which is laudable, but not at the expense of those people who are already in the system, and certainly not at the expense of my members. To adopt their proposal as drafted would not only decimate that support structure that those people need, it would result in a devastating layoff of coalition members. I would like to remind the council that King County did not rush to eliminate their probation services 15 years ago. They did it coordinated with labor, and we were asking for the same thing, if that is their ultimate goal. It's important to note that more than 50% of the probation counselor's current workload is comprised of DUIs cases, for which there are community monitoring requirements set by the legislature, and domestic violence cases. Our members provide these cases, our members provide services in these cases that are essential to securing their release from jail, and also with providing access to services to help support their success in the community and reduce recidivism. It is both, it is both the individual and the system, individuals in the system and the community that would suffer greatly under their funding proposal.
Sean, thank you. Thank you, and thank you for coming, and I'm sorry that you would have felt intimidated if you were going to be booed.
Not intimidated, it's unusual in this chamber as a labor leader.
I know you can stand up to it, but it's not the kind of environment that we encourage, so.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Andy? And then Janice Trayvon, good to have a fan club, and then Erica West.
My name is Andy Nagel, and I'm with the Center School. Thank you so much for your time. The budget doesn't put enough money into health and human services, plain and simple. I went through the 600-page budget document looking for money that could go to human services while maintaining the status quo. I quickly found this to be difficult, funding only funds from Seattle City Light Reorganization and from drainage and wastewater cuts already made. Allowing cuts, major changes must be made, like cuts to the police force, Office of Economic Development, and utilities. It has become abundantly clear to me that the status quo cannot be maintained if we hope to solve the city's problem with inequality. The move towards more sustainable spending for health and human services is a step in the right direction, but more must be done. In order to find these extra funds, the city must either cut programs or establish new revenue streams in the form of new taxes, both of which are unpopular. The city is caught between a rock and a hard place, but if new taxes aren't going to be enacted, cuts must be made to services that are receiving unnecessary funds. In my neighborhood, the population of homeless people has been rising steadily over the past few years. Services are either not being provided or not being advertised, as I see people sleeping under trees and in doorways on a daily basis. I worry for the health of people forced to live in deplorable conditions, and I worry for my family, who with one late paycheck could end up in the same place. More police is not the answer to this issue. You must put more money into health and human services. Thank you for your time and your respect to me and my colleagues.
Good. Thank you for coming. Really appreciate the fact that Center School is out in force. Janice Trayvon, Erica West, Ralph Nicholson, Melissa Barnett. Hi, Janice.
Good evening, I'm Janice Trayvon. I won't take up my full two minutes, which I know will please everybody, because I know that hundreds of my neighbors have already contacted you by email. I represent the Magnolia Community Council, and Magnolia, my neighborhood, is a community the third-largest zip code in Seattle with over 21,000 citizens. We are a bridge-dependent neighborhood. When one part of our system breaks down, it's chaos. I spent six years on the city's Magnolia Bridge Design Advisory Group, and would like to say that we're going to get a new bridge. But anyway, listening today, over and over, I've heard from, particularly from the kids at Center School, that the way that we've been doing things just isn't working, the way that we've been funding projects, the way we've been doing it, it's just not working. Therefore, I'd like to commend Councilmember Bagshaw for leading a process that includes the state, the county, Sound Transit, the port, and Metro in addressing the one-to-one Magnolia Bridge replacement as part of a regional transportation corridor. I request that this near-term funding be included in the budget, and that's it. I have also given a letter from the Magnolia Community Council on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Erica West, is Erica here? Number ninety-eight? Ralph? Good, thank you, ninety-nine, and Melissa Barnett, one hundred? Is Melissa here? Okay, good. So, please, Ralph, and then Melissa, if you'll get lined up up there.
Tonight, a very smart woman asked me to temper my opening statement concerning HSD, so I'm going to defer to her. My name's Ralph Nicholson, and while I'm advocating for Share, I'm speaking for myself. I realize that the purpose of this meeting is to discuss budgeting for 2019. With that said, I'd like to point out that Share Wheel provides shelter for one-third of the emergency and overnight shelter beds, for one-quarter of the cost of the city's navigation center, or for that matter, any other shelter. To quote former interim mayor Tim Burgess's statement concerning Share Wheel, "There's a difference in philosophy, and I think it is disqualifying. As of today, it seems that this is a pervasive sentiment among those lording over future city funding for Share and Wheel." My response to this inane statement is, "How is it disqualifying to be the only shelter system that provides free storage lockers for a displaced person's possessions?" I ask you, can you fathom how depressing it is to lose all your possessions and not have a change of clothes? Again, how is it disqualifying to have the only shelter in Seattle that provides a warm and safe place to sleep during the day? A place where swing shift and graveyard shift workers can also eat, shower, wash, and store their clothes? HSD says it will facilitate a permanent exit from shelter for over 7,000 people in 2018. Is it disqualifying for Share to re-intake the same people who cannot afford to pay exorbitant rents once their vouchers expire? Or re-intake people who are not yet emotionally or physically stable enough to live by themselves? As long as HSD refuses to sit down with Share to see what the people on the ground see on a daily basis, they will continue to make arbitrary decisions that will fail. Maybe, just maybe, it is the city that needs to reexamine its own philosophy.
Ralph, thank you for coming. Melissa? And then it looks like 101, we've got Jane Doe and Friends from Wheel, and I suspect many of you in the back are prepared to be number 101. Okay, so, Melissa, please.
Good evening, members of the Seattle City Council Budget Committee. My name is Melissa Barnett, I stay at Share's All-Women's Shelter at University Lutheran Church. Share and Wheel are unique. There is nothing like it anywhere. So why would that be a bad thing? Seattle should be proud of Share and what it's accomplished and its success in the city, and should absolutely try to share that with all the cities that are in housing crisis in the country. Here are two unique things that I value about Share and Wheel. First and foremost, self-management is so important. It allows people that really feel like they have no real use responsibility to themselves, responsibility to others. It gives them a sense of accomplishment, pride, they feel like they have some control over their housing, their situation. Now, we're able to collaborate with each other, and everyone feels that they have input and respect. No one feels like they're being talked down to or told like they're lower or less than. Secondly, Wheel's Low Barrier Women's Shelter has a capacity of 40, but often numbers are in the 50s and 60s. It's a safe place of last resort for homeless women. From day to day, the numbers change. Some faces stay a while, others come and go. The turnover is stunning and special. You can't even begin to speculate on the number of women who have avoided abuse, rape, illness, bad weather. There's no way to really know how many lives have been saved, how many homeless women rely on its open-door policy. It's been sheltering women for almost 20 years, and it's known and supported in the community. If the goal is keeping women safe and alive, who would otherwise face greater chances of harm? It is an undeniable and remarkable success. It's unique, and Seattle should be proud of this timely solution to a worldwide crisis. Why must it fight for its survival from the cuts of the Human Service Department every year? I urge you to support them this year, and insist on a Human Service Department with a little more humanity next year. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. How many, how many of you are altogether for Share?
So, 101, I guess, is not, so 102 is different.
Okay, then, so 101 is not here? So, 102? So, are you Skate Like a Girl? Yes, of course. Thank you for sticking around. Did you see how good I was after my lesson?
It's truly a pleasure. We actually brought you a present, Sally. Thank you for coming and skating with us.
Nice! Lovely.
Hello, council. My name is Kristen Ebling, and I am the Executive Director of Skate Like a Girl. Our organization's mission is to create a more inclusive community by promoting confidence, leadership, and social justice. I'm here today on behalf of Seattle, the Seattle skateboarding community, both past, present, and future, to ask for additional funds to be allocated to construct a roof and include lighting at the relocated Seattle Center Skate Park to be built by summer 2020. I understand right now it's a very hard time to ask for money. I understand right now it's a very hard time to ask for money. Homelessness amongst a plethora of other serious issues are extremely pressing. I've been in this room and in this building all night, I know. But I'm not here to ask for a roof because I think it would look cool or be some awesome amenity. I'm here to ask for a roof because it's a matter of equity. Right now, if you're a kid who wants to skate in the summertime, Seattle is probably the best place on earth to live. Seattle has one of the largest skate park systems, and if you want to learn, Skate Like a Girl has got you covered with lessons and gear. Whether your family comes to get free meal service at one of our skate lesson sites, or you're a participant in the East African Community Services Partnership Program, or you joined us for a free camp at the Roxhill Skate Park last summer, all kids in Seattle had an opportunity to skate. But this all changes when the rain comes. All the amazing skate parks that we have in the city turn into miniature water-holding reservoirs. Essentially, these kids now have almost zero access to skateboarding for the wintertime. In our city, there's only one indoor facility, Altogether Skate Park, that allows kids to skate all year. It's a great space, but it's in Fremont, and each session comes with a $10 fee. I think we can all agree it's not accessible for all kids in this city, and to me, that's not acceptable. It makes me wonder who gets to skateboard, who can be a skateboarder. Should it only be the kids that have the means to pay to get to this indoor facility, or is skateboarding a sport we want all kids to be able to participate in? As you can imagine, my organization and the community behind me think skateboarding should be for everybody. This new Seattle Center Skate Park gives you the opportunity to put a stake in the ground and stand with our whole community. And this money is a lot. But it didn't sure seem like a lot of money when the city demolished the four previous Seattle Center skate parks. Those skate parks were a culmination of concrete, rebar, resources, time, energy, donations that made them happen. Our community showing up tonight isn't just asking this out of nowhere. There is a history to this skate park. Being that this new skate park coming in 2020 will be its fifth iteration, put simply, if the city didn't displace and remove those four past skate parks, I wouldn't be here right now. We wouldn't be here right now. We would be skating one of them. Our city needs to make our community whole again for the repeated losses of the Seattle Center skate parks, to promote equity in skateboarding and acknowledge the history of our community. Please support Councilmember Bagshaw's legislative intent to ensure that skate parks serve the needs of our entire community. Enough about the past, I'm going to pass it off to the future.
Good evening, council. My name is Udo Raitana Parsons. I'm in the 7th grade at Madison Middle School, and I'm here to speak in favor of an equitable space for skateboarding by creating covered spaces for skate parks, including the one that will be relocated from Seattle Center. I've been skateboarding for about four years now, and I know that I'm so lucky and I have such a big privilege to be able to have parents that can drive me all the way across the city to go to Altogether Skate Park to skate two times a week. And I want to tell you a story about when I first started skateboarding. I was at Roxhill, my local skate park, with my mom, and it was my first time ever going out into public to skateboard. I noticed that I was the only girl around, and when I stepped onto the skate park, a teenage boy immediately ran me over with his bike. As he passed, he didn't even say anything to me. As I left, I heard him tell his friends that it was my fault for not moving out of his way. I left and didn't come back for a very long time. When I first joined Skate Like a Girl and began skating at the awesome indoor park, Altogether Skate Park, I realized that I didn't have to feel self-conscious about being the only girl. Skate Like a Girl is a safe and welcoming space for everyone, girls, boys, and gender non-confirming kids. It was a really big deal when I felt that I didn't have to keep peeking over my shoulder to check for boys on bikes. If I never joined Skate Like a Girl, I probably would have just stopped going to skate parks because I wouldn't have anyone take time to show me how to skateboard. I think this is true for a lot of girls. Creating another covered skate park would mean that Skate Like a Girl can bring an opportunity to girls and anyone who hasn't been traditionally included in the skateboarding culture. I hope our city creates more spaces for all kids to feel safe and supported all year long. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you all. Are you serious? I'm coming to get that.
He's a stretch.
Yeah.
Yeah, stretch break.
Will you tell us what it is?
Don't forget your number.
It says shren on me.
Yeah, of course.
All right, is 103 here?
They'll just line up.
Yeah, well, I think we're going to do that fast.
Yeah.
All right, how many of you in the audience still want to speak? Okay, so we're going to go through this fairly. So 103 is gone, 104. All right, 104. So Gabrielle and Austin? So will you do this in two minutes?
Do our best.
All right. Great, good. Go ahead.
Okay, my name's Gabby Davis. My pronouns are they/them, and I'm senior staff at the North King County Winter Shelter. Having only been housed for three months after our most recent period of homelessness, we know how easy it is to take standard daily rituals for granted, to wake up in the morning and be able to take a shower instead of just wiping down with baby wipes, or walking to the nearest Starbucks to take a bird bath in their public sinks, to not smell like mildew for a week after being unable to escape the Seattle rain from the previous night, to cook a hot breakfast instead of eating one from a bottle or a can, and to only use the bathroom when needed instead of an escape to cry since it's the only place we truly felt privacy. Unfortunately, our story is not unique. Currently, District 5 does not have a full-time day center with hygiene services. God's Little Acre is a safe and service-connected day center for people experiencing homelessness to meet their daily needs. It is also a foundation for their recovery and healing.
The Lake City Neighborhood Alliance has submitted a green sheet to Deborah Juarez in favor of expanding homeless services at God's Little Acre by extending hours 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, rather than just the current morning hours of 9:00 a.m. to noon. These increased hours allow unhoused people to have a predictable place to be during the day, provide them relief from the traumatic stress of street exposure and living in public spaces, giving more time for people to access free laundry facilities, showers, community kitchen, public phones, Wi-Fi, mail collection, personal storage, onsite case management, and housing services. God's Little Acre not only supports but strengthens the unhoused communities of District 5 and North King County, and we are proud to be here today to speak in solidarity with the Lake City Task Force on Homelessness, Seattle Mennonite Church, and all the homeless persons of North King County. Thank you, Shannon Deitch and Deborah Juarez, for being here today. My name is Austin. I use he/him pronouns. Thank you so much for being here today. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Thank you both. Well done on that two minutes. And I also just want to say thank you for coming, thank you for staying, and you, as I mentioned earlier, have an amazing advocate in D5, and Deborah Juarez has been speaking about this, so we appreciate your coming. So thank you so much. All right. So those two were 104. I think- I think five went, six went, seven went, eight went, and I think we're at 109. 109? Okay, Megan McMillan, 110? Are you Megan? Great, okay. And then just afterward, we've got Chris Cruz, Haley, Day, Dan, Debbie, and we'll go, whoever has the closest to 110, whatever the number is. Go ahead, please.
I'll be brief. I just actually came down here looking for Jeff Bezos, and I was surprised because he's not here, you know? Which is weird, because, I mean, I think you guys ceded your authority to Jeff Bezos. Yeah. And so now, I don't know, you know, so who do we take, you know, these issues to? You know, there's been tons of people here, lots of issues, lots of needs, lots of wants. The only way to really take care of all of this is to raise funds. Right? And so when you give your power to someone else, power to Jeff Bezos, and there's no way that we can go talk to him, then what are we supposed to do? Right? So it just seems to me that when the going gets tough, we need you guys to draw your swords, and that's what I'm asking for. That's it.
Thank you. Who's 112? 112? It's going to work like Price is Right. Haley? Day? 117? 118? We got a bingo. Come on up. All right, tell me you can do this in two minutes.
Are we ready?
Please, go ahead.
I don't want to talk really fast.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for your patience. You have an incredible patience. My name is Venus Ayoki. I use she/her/they, and I'm the economic justice organizer for LGBTQ Allyship. Allyship is a social economic justice advocacy organization in Seattle, representing over 3,000 members. I'm here to ask for an increase in the community outreach and education funding by an additional $500,000 with the Office of Labor Standards. While we are grateful that community engagement funds have not been reduced, and we have a job, there has been an increase in inflation rates and workload that is not reflected in the current budget. Allyship is working deeply in the restaurant industry, outreach into LGBTQ restaurant workers, and educating them on their rights and worker resources. My first job in the U.S. was in a restaurant, and many of my college and customers misgendered me. The weight of discrimination around my gender identity was too heavy, but when I saw the pictures of the Trump administration-caging, young documented childrens, I became inspired to stand up for trans and young documented people like me. Then I learned from LGBTQ Allyship Talk Gender to Me Project, and I became their economic justice organizer. Allyship Worker Protections Work in the Restaurant Industry increases economic security for trans and queer workers. The need is increasing, and we hope you consider increasing community outreach and education funding by $500,000 annually. And now, I would like to introduce Allyship Housing Advocate, Saad Gomez.
Good evening. I am part of the Allyship Leadership Institute, and not too long ago, I found safety and happiness in households where everybody there identified as a queer or trans person of color. Unfortunately, the supportive sanctuary was lost because our property management was able to legally raise our rent $800 in less than one year. What is even more tragic is that the actions could have been prevented if we had known or been more educated about our tenants' rights. The gentrification of the city has come at the expense of our queer community. Now, as a part of the Leadership Institute, my peers work to preserve what is left of our safe spaces, but to do so, we need support, and I ask the LGBT community groups to be prioritized in providing renters' education to LGBTQ marginalized renters in the bi-2019, 2020 budget.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One last thing. My name is Debbie Carlson. I'm the Executive Director of LGBTQ Allyship, and I've come here before. I wanted to just call to attention that trans and LGBTQ lives will not be erased if local governments unite in their values to truly uphold the Race and Social Justice Initiative and include an LGBTQ equity lens at all levels. In September, late September, the Office of Housing released an LGBTQ senior report called Aging in Community, and reported four out of five LGBTQ seniors have experienced discrimination and did not know their rights or available resources. We also know social isolation is high in LGBTQ marginalized senior communities, which leads to depression, suicide, idilation, and housing instability. Allyship has been engaging in LGBTQ intergenerational programming since 2014. We ask that funding for aging adults in Seattle prioritizes LGBTQ seniors and older adults. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for coming, thank you for staying. Okay. I think the next number up is 121? 122? 123? Please. Okay, Mark? You almost lost it, Mark.
I'm so tired.
You are. For heaven's sake.
Well, thank you for allowing us this act of participatory democracy today. Really appreciate you all still being here with us. And of course, my name is Mark Taylor-Canfield. I'm a local journalist and musician, and last time I addressed the full council, I was singing you a song-
We know.
-that I wrote about the Showbox. So hopefully, we're going to win that battle, and we're in the studio recording that song right now. But tonight, I wanted to talk about something that I deal with as a journalist, and I recently wrote an article at Daily Coast, a quite extensive article called "Seattle's Loss of Affordable Housing Hits Home," and I talk about the history of the loss of affordable housing in Seattle, and also a house up on Capitol Hill at 17th and Olive that just evicted 30 artists who've been living there for six or seven years. So it's an ongoing issue in Seattle. I'm also Executive Director of a nonprofit news organization called Democracy Watch News, and we cover this issue quite extensively as well. In fact, earlier tonight, I did a live report from City Hall for a radio station up Boston about this subject. And the point is, is that I had to report that Seattle and Martin Luther King Jr. County have both declared civil emergencies due to homelessness. I also had to report that, oh, by the way, I don't think that Dr. King would be very happy knowing that over 10,000 people have no permanent residence in this county named after him, and the fact that we have the most regressive tax system in the country, that we have no rent control because of a prohibition by the state legislature, the fact that, you know, we're paying 10% sales tax in Seattle, which only really affects poor and working-class families. It's them the hardest. And I just have to say that, you know, for one of the most progressive cities in the country, it's very difficult for me as a journalist to have to go and talk to other people and tell them that we have the third-largest homeless population behind only Los Angeles and New York City. So we need to do a much better job. We must make a very strong commitment to increase the funding for affordable housing in this next budget. I long for the day when I don't have to report these sad facts about the loss of affordable housing and homelessness in Seattle, so I hope we can do something about that in 2019. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. All right, so we'll go back to 122. Glenn? 123, David? 125, Megan? David? How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Thanks for staying.
Of course.
I'm speaking to the amendment that Shama put forth to fund the Housing Justice Project in Washington Can. So my story is that several years ago, I was facing an eviction after my landlord put us the notice to vacate. I had very little money and no legal education whatsoever, and I ended up homeless for about six months. Then I started working at the urban rest stop, and when I started working there, I noticed, like, the floodgates opened up of what I would call our eviction epidemic, what it's been called before, and I saw it go full swing, and I recently decided to volunteer as a legal assistant at the Housing Justice Project. I've only been there a short time, but I've seen them do important work, providing free legal representation and consultation to those facing evictions. When a tenant who is poor and struggling financially receives a notice to pay or vacate the Housing Justice Project, it's one of the few places they can go for legal representation. It has a small team. The pro bono attorneys stay late, folks get turned away. Oftentimes, they're spurred into homelessness as their lives unravel in the urgency to vacate their homes. That's why I think it's important to support the amendment and to fund the Housing Justice Project in Washington Can with $500,000 and $200,000 respectively, to educate tenants on their rights, provide representation for tenants facing evictions, and keep people in their homes. Please protect the poor, protect low-income residents, please give the people legal education and representation that won't burden them financially, and fund the HJP in Washington Can, please.
Thank you. Thank you, David, for coming and for just expressing your opinion. Megan Murphy is not here. Karina Tong? All right. Okay. And what number are you?
126.
Okay. Please. Introduce yourself and-
Sure. My name is Brandon Davis. I'm an attorney at the Department of Public Defense, where Karina Tong also works. I'm here today speaking on my own behalf and not on behalf of DPD, but I've stayed this late because I think it is so important that you pass the Budget for Justice. I know that it's scary for many elected officials to cut funding for law enforcement, but what is happening in Seattle Municipal Court demands reform. And one way we can start is by defunding probation and allocating that money to the community organizations that you've heard from earlier tonight. The sentences that are imposed in SMC are significantly harsher than sentences in other jurisdictions. Misdemeanors in SMC often result in harsher sentences even than felonies, which are adjudicated right across the street in King County Court. Probation is just another layer of punishment, and concerns about layoffs are not valid reasons to keep putting more people in jail, and I think it's telling that this evening, the only people that you've heard from in support of keeping probation are the people employed by the courts. If this council is serious about reducing crime, improving safety in the city, you need to fund affordable housing and the other social services that are offered by the community organizations that you've heard from tonight, and stop funding probation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brandon. Calvin, 127? Oh, nice. And just checking in, Reverend Stephen Davis?[1789.44] I can see you, sir, back there. Looks like Alan Hill and Ann. Okay. Ann, did you speak with the group already? Okay, we're going to have to, like, say thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Calvin Jones, and I'm an organizer for Seattle Tech for Housing. I'm here to speak in support of Councilmember Muscati's proposal to do a race and social justice equity analysis on the city's urban village strategy. Today in Seattle, it is illegal to build more housing on 69% of the city's residential land, and for me, that is unconscionable. It is perpetuating racial and social exclusionary policies in the city. It is damaging the environment as it forces people to take longer commutes, and it is locking an entire generation out of the American dream of homeownership. This policy is perpetuated by power dynamics in a conversation that massively favor homeowners at the expense of renters, and it's time for the city to take control. It is so easy for a homeowner to block a duplex from being constructed on their block, but it is hard to convey to a renter that it was their duplex that didn't get built. It's easy for groups of homeowners to put tens of thousands of dollars towards ensnaring progressive housing policy in endless legal battles, and it is hard to convey to the public that anything we do to try and address this affordable housing crisis will be caught up in these grotesque invocations of the state's environmental policies. I think it is time for the city to take control of the conversation and establish a shared set of facts that we can all work from that establish that how important land use policy is to the city, and I think we can finally right a wrong that's been going on each and every day since 1994. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Reverend Stephen Davis, thank you for waiting, sir.
Good evening, council members. I'm Reverend Stephen Davis, Executive Minister, along with Lead Pastor Reverend Dr. Kelly Brown of Plymouth Church United Church of Christ here in downtown Seattle. We urge the City Council members to fully fund SHARE Wheel low-barrier women's shelters. Those who most need our support and care, those who most need our support and care cannot be made to live unsupported and unsheltered existences. We're not talking about the homeless, rather people experiencing homelessness. Plymouth Church has been a pillar in the community establishing permanent housing and care services through Plymouth Housing Group and those persons experiencing homelessness, and Plymouth Healing Communities for those needing companioning due to experiencing homelessness and mental illness. Along with other congregations, we've proudly supported SHARE Wheel with a safe location in which to shelter women experiencing homelessness in our community. That homelessness continues in a place like Seattle, with all its wealth, ability, and privilege is unacceptable. That we've spent over 10 years trying to combat homelessness is asinine. Those persons experiencing homelessness don't need us to be their combatants. They need responsible budgeting that supports and funds affordable housing first, and shelters where all can be served and safe. The mayor's budget removes funding and limits the ability of people experiencing homelessness to have places of safety and security in which they can live with dignity. Already this year, almost 100 people have died due to being unsheltered and experiencing violence in their experience of homelessness. This far exceeds last year. The budget and the lack of funding creates a more devastating experience for thousands of women, children, and men, people of color, and LGBTQ persons. We urge the City Council to provide funding for shelter for every person experiencing homelessness and needing affordable housing to live with the same kind of hope that we enjoy. Make the budget match the social conscience to which our city aspires. Thank you.
Reverend, thank you. Thank you for coming.
I promised to take only about 30 seconds. My name is Mary Mitchell Putnam. I'm a member of Plymouth Congregational Church. I'm also the church administrator at University Lutheran Church. You heard from one of the Wheel shelter women who is at my work church. Having a SHARE Wheel shelter at University Lutheran has not only benefited them, it's benefited the community of the church. It provides community, it provides safety, not only for them, but for the area around the church. I strongly urge you to support SHARE Wheel.
Thank you very much. Alan Hill? Is that it? Okay, we're calling it a night. Thank you all for coming, and I suppose...
Five hours.
Oh, wait a second. What's up?
My name's Sean Greenberg. I'd like to cede my time to Ann.
Sir, she's already spoken, and we have this rule where a group comes up, they get five minutes, and I'll stay by and afterward and talk with you. You can tell me what it is, but I think that, you know, we have now been here for five hours, and special thanks to my colleagues who have stuck with this. Councilmember Gonzalez, I hope your cold's better. I am going to call this public hearing to a close, and I'll talk with you afterward. Thank you all for coming. The meeting's adjourned.